I know. Welcome, everyone, to the MSAD 51 Board of Directors Meeting, Thursday, April 17th, the Thursday before April break. I know many families have already started. I was gonna say, go to warmer places, but it's a nice, warm day today, which is a nice change. We are gonna start with some recognitions, which I always love to kick off these meetings with. I'd like to welcome Principal Monte Selby up to the podium.
All right, this is a little bit of an unusual recommendation to say I'm gonna talk about professional development, but I really want to do that to highlight some things about staff. And the reason I put that picture in there is just, we're trying to focus on things that are right up close, and we're always looking way ahead. And I'll give you a little more picture of that in just a few minutes. So that engage, empower, inspire that you see everywhere, we really took that on with a little deeper meaning for theme this year in terms of every time we have PD or staff meetings or parent-teacher conferences, can we go in with the idea of trying to engage people, or whether it's kids or adults, parents, whatever, and then give them something usable and empower them, and hopefully leave people inspired. And so that was our approach with the idea that if everyone's trying to do that in each direction, make everybody a stronger part of the organization. So when we quit going backwards and go forward, then, well, this is playing some funny games with me. Let's try this. Ah-ha. So the people who tend to be in charge of professional development would be the teaching and learning team, and then other individuals and administration, and whether that would be someone within the building or central office. And so just as an idea, on October 11th, there are the staff members who were like teacher-to-teacher presenting areas of expertise, and every one of those people spent time prepping to help their own colleagues, which I think is pretty cool. And that shows you the topics for the day, and people were able to choose something that would be meaningful and help them move forward. And some of those would be more tech skills, or things about group work, or moving an individual lesson from good to great, that kind of thing. So then one other piece was, and I'll tie this in in a minute, but taking something like latest research on instruction that helps kids learn, embedding that in some of the work we did. So it might look like this. That was March the 14th PD, and you'll see that there were a lot of people presenting on a lot of topics from our Looking Ahead on MTSS and AI and tech tips and things like that. And then we start getting feedback from the staff about the brunch, that's always a hit, but AI and MTSS, there's direct feedback to the staff who are presenting. And then things about the chapter work that we did on that book and the interactive discussions. So then you take that feedback and what they wish for on the next follow-up PD. So then there's April 9th, using that feedback data to plan for April 9th. So we're trying to specifically deliver to staff things that they would find helpful. And so next steps, as we're, when I said, looking up close and further ahead, so the administration, teaching and learning team, ELSI as leadership council, and the staff, you start planning for our school improvement plan for next year, and our PD days, and our early release PD days, and planning for when we become a 5-8 school, which seems like way down the road, but it feels like tomorrow. So how do you get the time and you keep working together? And I stuck this slide in because all of that work and the day-to-day stuff with kids, there's always something to deal with. And if you don't keep laughing about the hard stuff, then it's just hard to move ahead. And that's a real-life picture, just so you know, out of the past. But stuff like that really happens, and you're trying to plan for a 5-8 school someday, you know? And so when we got ready for April 9th, we asked some kids to help out so the staff could kick it off with something a little bit lighter, and we'll see if this works.
Hello, fellow adults. I am one of Dr. Selby's AI-developed video presenters.
And I was designed by Mr. L.
They carefully designed us to look like familiar middle-school students.
Thanks for taking the time to read this book, The New Classroom Instruction That Works.
As you know, the book includes the best research-based strategies for increasing student achievement.
Today is an opportunity for content teams to have meaningful conversations related to a preferred chapter.
Please use time wisely and stay on topic. I know how easy it is to get you off-topic.
When I see you in class, I'll ask you what you've learned in the book so far.
Oh, you want to know what comes next?
Next year, we'll continue discussing and applying the ideas from this book.
Keep working your way through these chapters.
As my teachers say, you'll need to read it more than once to effectively integrate the strategies into your classroom.
After that, it's practice, practice, practice. Yes, I read Chapter 5 as well.
Well, what are you waiting for?
Yeah, we'll see if it'll let me go. There you go. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
That was really great to get more insight on what goes on in the days. I know, as a board, we end up talking a lot about PD days, and I don't think I've had this good of a view into it previously, so thank you. All right.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Dr. Selby, how, I don't know, scale of 1 to 10, how much space is there in those PD days for just one more thing? Like, I get the sense that they are packed.
Yeah, if you use every minute, you're just short a lot.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Especially with looking at next year, you know, the work to be done.
Yeah.
We're never, we're never sure.
Yeah.
We're never long on PD time.
Because I think sometimes when we're like, oh, maybe we could introduce this in, say, a personal development day, it's nice to know. It's enlightening to know that, like, actually stop doing that because we don't have time.
Yeah. You could do a Saturday, that's great.
Oh, yeah, sure. Everybody would love that, yeah. Thanks. Thank you. And welcome, Julie Olson.
Hi, thanks. So I don't have any AI children to present tonight, and I have a very different take on my highlight. You also get me a couple of times tonight. I was thinking I'd stay connected, but I don't know with public comment that I can, because I think you put a video timer up, right? But my highlight is a staff member, and I could go on for days about my staff member, and I won't, but I am happy at any time to talk to any of you about my staff member. He is ultimately the best. And this is a really unique position that years ago the board supported, and it is invaluable. Our district honestly could not function well without this staff member. So Eric Brown, and I did put a picture of him, so if you are on campus and you see him, stop and thank him. He is a mental health specialist for us. His licensure is a social worker by trade. We call him a mental health specialist because that is what he does. So he works with our students from preschool up and through age 22, so our students who under the law state through age 22. So he does the whole gamut. He works across all of the buildings, and he is literally often seen sort of jogging through all of the buildings. He probably wouldn't mind me sharing that he has a black belt in his personal life, and does athletic, you know, softball, baseball, I'm not sure. He has children in our district himself, so he's a community member. And he supports our students with their mental health needs, their social-emotional learning, their substance-use needs. He collaborates with all of our social workers in all of our buildings. He collaborates with our administrators, with all of our parents. He crunches and considers all of our MIAZ data, so our mental health, mental youth survey data, uses that data to help drive our instruction forward and look at where our holes might be, and help us program and plan for that. He completes all of our risk assessments in the district. So once a social worker considers a student might not be low-risk and needs a more formalized risk assessment, that might be more considered borderline-low or on to moderate or high, he does all of that formalized testing, does all the collateral contact with our outside providers. If we have a student who's placed someplace like Spring Harbor, he is the student who's doing all of the collaboration with that outside hospital, like Spring Harbor or St. Mary's, any of those places. He's doing the discharge work with those teams, transitioning them back into our school, developing safety plans. He's doing what we call our C-stag, which is our behavioral threat assessment management process, bringing teams together to do those C-stag processes. So, right, heavy, heavy, heavy work, right? He's carrying that on his shoulder every day for us. He also then provides direct clinical services for some of those students as they're needing him before he can pass them back off to our school-based social workers. So any students that are sort of our higher-tiered students that come out as high-risk, are struggling and need some more sensitive care, he's doing that either in collaboration with the school-based social worker or doing it himself, and then when the time is right, passing it along. He works with teams to create safety plans, helps implement those safety plans. And really, he's just invaluable. I mean, I can't rave about him enough, and I know historically we used to sort of bring folks and embarrass them and stand here. He knows he's being embarrassed tonight. He's very aware of that. I was supposed to be here in December, and then myself got COVID, and so this presentation is delayed. So he thought he was being embarrassed in December. I told him it was postponed and did inform him that he was being embarrassed today. And he would not be somebody that would do well. He's very humble, so he wouldn't do well standing here, but he is, all of our social workers feel very supported by him. Our administrators know he is always sort of a few minutes away if they need him. He comes to support them. And he is just really somebody that our district is very fortunate to have, and he does his job with grace and is very humble. And I think I would, I have never had a parent not be very grateful for the work that he brings to the table. So that is my highlight. I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you do see him, please thank him for his work.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. I know anybody who's come across Eric in the hallway, just like his presence is just...
Oh, my gosh, right?
Like, so positive. Any questions? I'm so glad that you have honored Eric in this way, because, yeah, it's, we are very, I'm very grateful that our district has this role and him in it, so.
Thank you. And I think people who don't know him wouldn't necessarily know him, and so I hope he does get recognized.
Thank you.
So should I un, will you need the screen?
Only if there's, I have no one signed up for regular public comment. I feel like I shouldn't even, like, say that out loud, but I don't have anybody for regular public comment.
So I'll just say yes.
So, yeah, the only thing that we have in between that is just approval of minutes, but that just takes a moment, so we can move on to approval of minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 3rd, 2025 meeting as presented?
So moved.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions or comments? Great, all in favor? It's unanimous? Were you not there that me? You wasn't there, okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2025 meeting as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Sean. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, it's unanimous. So as I mentioned earlier, the next item was public comment for the general non-budget items. Okay, great. Moving on to presentations.
Hi, Julie.
I'm back. So thanks for having me. This is my annual update around instructional support, and I'm here to discuss a few things, and I'm happy to take questions at the end, or if there's anything that you want me to pause or elaborate on, I'm happy to do that. Just go ahead and, you know, signal me. My agenda today really is around, I'm trying to take sort of a 30,000-foot view around special education more than instructional support. So my title is really Director of Instructional Support because it captures quite a broad range, and I'll speak a little bit around multi-tiered systems of support, since that is a portion of my role, but more focusing on special education tonight. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the state and national landscape of special education, the supports we have here in MSAD 51, the continuum of services of special education, and then some data specific to instructional support related to special education, and then some continued work and next steps in our department. Carla Fancy is also here, who's our Assistant Director of Instructional Support, also is for support, and I just want to point that out. I also want to just take a moment to thank the board. I think that we have absolutely incredible programming in this district for instructional support across the board, and I think that you will see that in this presentation. And I don't feel like the board gets thanked enough for your support in our department. We are very fortunate. We have people move here often, and they tell us that often in meetings, that we bought a house here for the special education programming. We came here because of special education programming, and we all can't do our job without the support of the board, so thank you. So to start with some landscape information that I think is very relevant to just where we are, right now, it is my understanding, unless something's changed sort of more recently, the state of Maine's special education identification rate for students with special needs is over 20%. So over 20% identification rate for students with disabilities. Maine has the second-highest identification rate in the nation, with Arkansas being the highest. Our identification rate in MSAD 51 is about 13.4%, so we are lower than the state identification rate. I'm gonna go on to explain what supports we have in place for that, to sort of understand that data. Please do understand that our data changes almost daily. We hold IEP meetings daily, and some of those are identifications that we identify as students, and sometimes we dismiss a student. So we do an October 1 count, and we do an April 1 count, and so that is where our data comes from, but really it is shifting daily, so this is a moment in time. So why? Why would we be that much lower than the state average? What is it about MSAD 51? I mean, certainly, we have a lot of students with disabilities. We have, just like the state would have, we have a sampling of students. What would we attribute that to? And I would really attribute it to what our built-in supports are that we have across, and this comes back to sort of what I was saying at the beginning of the thanking of the board and administration and my colleagues across the district. We have RTI, or Multi-Tiered Systems of Support, for reading, writing, math behavior across our pre-K up until high school, and for some of our post-grad students that are here. We have a very robust system that we're pretty well-known for across the state. Our system's well-developed. We have great systems in place with programs being implemented that are valid, reliable, and consistently implemented with staff that are well-trained. We have a two-half-day pre-K program that we're partnering with CDS, and again, we're seeing an impact of that with our students who are entering kindergarten. So those students are coming in, there are students in those programs that are identified, and some of those students are being dismissed by the end of pre-K or the beginning of kindergarten. So some of that identification rate is even dropping before they've begun with us, where they'd be coming in and kindergarten identified. You've probably heard me talk, I did a presentation previous, in a previous year, about our embedded professional model. The board supported us hiring professionals of speech and language, occupational therapists, and social workers that we placed as full-time professionals in our self-contained classrooms across the district, so in our functional life skills and our behavioral classrooms, so that they could partner with our special educators full-time and be specialists working with our most involved students. We have nine of those professionals across the district at this time. We have seen a big impact working with those students and working as teams of educators across the district. That's a pretty unique model. Certainly, we have Eric Brown's position, and that helps us a lot in terms of early intervention, supporting students across in their mental health. We have a very robust new teacher series that Jeff, myself, and Marie run to really retain and attract teachers and provide our regular educators, as well as our special educators, throughout the year, so that they are being given strategies and support, not just at the beginning mentoring opportunity, but throughout the year. And then we have an EdTech Professional Development Series that Carla runs, similarly, where they're being provided professional development throughout the year to be working with our students. Additionally, we're working really hard to support all of our learners with diverse needs across multiple settings. So we support them whether they're in general education, in their special education classroom, in their self-contained education classroom, recess, lunch, allied arts, wherever they are. And we have all of these resources in place, including the embedded model, our mental health specialists, our board-certified behavior analysts, all of those resources and specialists work across our district. So we don't have it just sort of housed in one building, but we have those K through, pre-K through 12. I do have a note here at the bottom, so while we're lower than the state average, we have seen an increase. So in fiscal year 22, 23, we were just over 12%, and we're now over 13%, creeping up to 14%. So we also are seeing an increase. So this is, this slide is really about what is the continuum of special education services? I've gotten that question some this year, and I think it's important to just sort of pause and talk about what does that look like? You know, when you say embedded professionals are in your self-contained classrooms, what does that look like, different than another classroom? So students can have services in a variety of models or a variety of places. We always start by law in a multi-tiered system of support or an RTI service, and you, Marie and I have both talked about that with the board before. So we always start with an intervention practice. And then if the student requires per that data and per testing an IEP, or specially-designed instruction, that's what the SDI stands for, in academics or behavior, executive functioning, or some area of need, we move to an IEP at that time. And the IEP team walks through state eligibility forms. It's very scripted, and if they meet criteria, then an IEP is developed. And we train our staff to work in whatever program the child needs based upon their disability category that is identified. There are 13 disability categories that the state recognizes in grades 1 and up, and there are 14 in kindergarten. So a student may be a resource room student. They might be in what we call our Bridges Program, which is sort of our students that are in a gappy program. They might be in functional life skills, or they might be in our behavioral program. And we train all of our staff to work in those programs, and they have the proper training, and then we monitor them in those programs, and we shift and make changes to their IEP with an IEP team that includes parents throughout that process. And that continuum of support might increase for a student if they're struggling, or it might decrease for a student if they're becoming more independent. And that continuum of support might increase for a student if they're struggling, or it might decrease for a student if they're becoming more independent and they're making progress. And we tailor that based upon a student. If our in-house programming becomes unsuccessful for a student, or we've exhausted all of our resources, the IEP team monitors a student's data and determines that an out-of-district program may be necessary for a student, and then we follow that channel of discussion. Certainly, we believe as a district that a least restrictive environment is always the place to start with a multi-tiered system of supports and then working in a general ed setting for a student, and then building up through a more restrictive self-contained setting based upon students' needs and programming, certainly. So now I'm gonna share some data, and while this was taken last year, I tried to survey staff based upon what our topics are. So this year, we're doing professional development on different topics, so it wasn't relevant to the presentation, but it still feels relevant and knew enough to share with you all, but we surveyed our staff at the start of the year, last year, around sort of where do we need to focus our PD? What are you guys feeling about our reading, writing, math, social-emotional programmings? And I wanted to share with you about sort of how our staff feeling, where are we at, what do we need to focus on? So forty-seven percent of our staff agreed or strongly agreed, and there were thirteen point six percent of staff who responded to this. So that was about eighty-eight, eighty-nine staff who responded at this time. Felt that our reading programs were strong and research-based, so they were feeling like we were doing pretty well in the area of reading. At the time, twenty-three point nine and thirteen point six being new, felt that our writing programs were strong and research-based, so clearly an area of need, right? And I think again, if you guys can pull the start of the school year, I know it's been a long year, but Marie and I shared our district plan of what we were working on, and writing was one of the areas that we've been working on as our literacy group. Clearly, this data substantiates that work. Thirty-seven point five with the six, with thirteen point six being new, said that math was strong and research-based, so again, continued area of growth for us. And fifty-one point one with fourteen point eight, so another staff member had answered this question, felt that our behavioral programs and supports were strong and research-based. And fifteen point one with fourteen point eight felt that our social-emotional programming and supports were strong and research-based. So for next steps, sort of in the area of instructional support, we obviously always have a ton to work on, right? Our students are dynamic. They're changing. People move in, people's needs grow, people's needs change. We continue to need to be strengthening and be proactive around our social-emotional learning and our substance use interventions. That's what our data says. We're going to be responsible in fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight for our three and four-year-olds who are identified, so that is planning that is on the horizon for next year. We certainly need to continue to stay current in best practices and are really focusing on the area of writing this year, and that work will likely be continuing next year. I think Jeff had shared with the board the NESDEC findings that came out, and two of those had a real focus to special education. So that's work that our department needs to do around engaging stakeholders regarding special education and programming, and considering additional training and around the criteria setting for supporting the district IEP teams and ensuring that all relevant information's considered when making those determinations. And then certainly continuing to survey our staff and shaping our professional development accordingly, based upon sort of what we're hearing from staff and where we're at. That's all I have. But again, it was a pretty broad overview. What questions do you guys have for me?
Thank you. That was really helpful, and I think especially as we're, you know, having the budget conversations tonight as well to better understand, you know, what goes on in special education and what the services are that are being offered in our district, so that was really helpful. Do people have questions?
You know I do.
I'll go after you.
Okay. Thanks. That was a great presentation. So I've got a couple, but I think this is definitely something that's been on my mind, and I'm actually surprised how low our numbers are, but your explanation was fantastic. How does this break down, do you know, by school?
For identifications?
Yeah.
So I can't answer that off the tip of my head because, again, it sort of shifts day by day, but, you know, in general, our populations are not higher in one building than another building. We're pretty evenly split. So we don't have a sort of heavier teeter-totter, if you will, in one building than another. We have equal programmings in each of our schools.
Okay, and then the other thing is, this is kind of a selfish, Tim's personal life kind of question, but I've noticed my role at UNE that our kids come in and a lot of the services and support they had in high school drop completely, and then they don't know what to do, and it's like they're on their own to find their own accommodations. Is there anything on like this end that we do for when you like, maybe you are dismissed from accommodation, even if you're here, or if you've been, if you graduated, that we do to kind of keep an eye on them or make sure that that support continues even after they've left us? Like, what are some of the practices with that?
So I love this question. So a couple of things. We, two years ago, hired a new role called a transition coordinator, and it is a role that we're trying to really focus on that idea. So an IEP expires upon graduation. It's a law that goes away. And then students move to, they can move to a five oh four plan, which is an accommodation law versus direct instruction, which is drastically different, right? So kids go to college and all of a sudden the umbilical cord's cut and they're flailing, right? So our job really in high school is to think about how can we go from what has really been, and I would say really particularly a Taj Mahal approach to a lot of support, and still hugging our students, but yet trying to systematically fade some of those supports and teach as much of the skills that they need to go off and be college and career-ready. I mean, that's the language that we're trying to support and balance that while still monitoring that we're supporting them and teaching the skills when they're these early adolescents, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seven, right, that we're not pulling those supports. And it is a balancing act, and it's one that we, that I don't think any district's yet perfected, but it's certainly something that we continue to work with students and families on. How do you access, you know, your college student support services? How do we provide you with all of the proper documentation? How do we work on self-advocacy? Our school counseling office is really working with setting students up for having the right documentation and, and meetings with all of the colleges to do that. And sometimes we have schools that are great partners with us and that, and there are some schools that are like, you're on your own, right? And so that is not yet a perfect two-way street, and it is not something we've perfected, but our transition coordinator has really helped support some of that work, and I hope to see that continue to grow.
That's awesome. Okay, thank you.
I just have kind of a, it's probably a double-edged sword question. How are we supporting our ed techs and the people who are working on the day-to-day, on the front lines with the students? We've had some, you know, I know as, as childcare provider, preschool up to sixth grade, you know, kids have hard days, and how, how are we as a district supporting our, our employees who are on the front lines?
Yeah, I would say all of our employees are on the front lines, but we certainly can't.
Absolutely.
We certainly can, we can certainly not run our district without our ed techs, right? And my department would not function without our ed techs, so we literally could not open the doors.
Right.
So, you know, a few things. I think that we're trying really hard to provide them more professional development than we ever have through our ed tech series, which is why I placed that on the slide. I think that is really important. The more professional development we can give our staff, the more equipped they are to handle all disabilities and the nuances of students who walk through the door, right? Because no student presents.
The same.
Right, or, you know, you say you have a student with autism. Well, what does that mean from a textbook? So we need to be able to give the real-time, you know, strategies and support. So I think professional development is one way that we're supporting them. We also are giving more team time on our early release Wednesdays for the actual teams of people. So we have the K-12 professional development happening, and then team times for like the life skills team, or the behavior team, or the resource room team, to be working together on their caseloads and looking at the data and looking at, you know, what reading program are we using? What math program? How's their behavioral data looking? And those pieces to collaborate together as well. And then certainly the buildings are doing climate and culture work for all in their building to support the work that's happening.
Thank you.
So I feel like I need even more education on special education. I'm trying to, to educate myself. What does it, what would it look like to be a school with a high special ed rate? Or, you know, a higher percentage like the rest of the state? If, so if we didn't have these tiered systems of support and that means there would be more children identified as special ed? Okay, so what would that look like for our district if that was the case?
Wow. That is a tricky question. What it would look like, I, I think I'm, I think I'm gonna answer your question correctly, but if I go off here and you meant for me to be here, please redirect me. We would have much higher caseloads. We would have many more students who were accessing. So like students who you all probably envision have a one-on-one right now because of their level of safety or life skills needs would likely be in groups of three with one adult. We would have students who generally now probably work in groups of like three or four in a reading group, would likely be in groups of five or six, seven, eight, because they would have a higher number of students on their caseloads, higher and less interventions prior to getting there, and the staff ratio would look different because ultimately, how do you staff that number of, of students that are identified? I mean, we have really good interventions. We have good staffing, and we are able to do the pre-work prior to. So we've laid the foundation, so students are then entering the special education with the baseline that they need to show that they are, they truly have a disability in an area, rather than getting into special education and trying to figure it out then. Right, so they're not entering sort of a group that they're trying to navigate and figure out which area they should go. They're able to enter into the proper instructional group at that time.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you. That was a good answer. So, so the goal then is to make sure that someone is not identified as special ed who actually does not have a disability?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We never wanna violate somebody's free appropriate public education or for this, you know, the acronym FAPE. We don't ever want someone to feel that we have. When I first got here, there was sort of this, which has now been twelve years, I'm getting older by the minute, right? But we, we, there was this idea that getting into special ed was like getting through the golden gates of special ed, and it was very sad to me that we, that people felt like they had to get to special ed to get services. And you shouldn't ever feel like that as a parent, right? You should be able to get really great reading instruction, really great math instruction, really great behavioral support, regardless of what plan you're on. You should be able to be on an MTSS plan or RTI plan. You should be able to be on a GT plan, an ELL plan, an IEP or a five oh four, or really just be a tier one in the classroom, and you should be able to get really great instruction by any educator who's trained really well. And if you need, you know, different instruction than the classroom's able to give you, but you don't have a disability, you just learn a little bit differently, you should be able to get that by a trained educator, and you shouldn't have to fight to get through the golden gates of special ed, that, that, and be labeled something differently. Then if you do in fact have a disability, you should have access to a trained special educator to, to get the services that you need as a child with a disability, certainly, right? But that's the distinguishing factor, and we have great people trained in MTSS to work with our students who don't have disabilities, but just need something a little bit different.
Thank you.
That was really helpful.
Really helpful.
Thank you. I know we have more questions maybe on this side. All right, who's next?
It was a great presentation, and I appreciate it, because I feel like I'm in the boat with Kim, but I feel like I could learn a lot more about it. So with that said, I know you mentioned staff training in regards to teachers, ed techs in those positions. Do you have a rough idea how much hours of training or days of training, like bus drivers get, or custodians, or people that work in the lunchroom? And especially, particularly, I would think, bus drivers, just because they're by themselves technically with some of these kids. So is it annual training? Is it just one time? What does, what does that policy look like, or what is that, do we have in practice?
So our bus drivers don't get a lot of extra training related to our students with disabilities, but they're not by themselves on the bus necessarily. So any student who would require additional interventions because of behavior or communication, because they're needing specially-designed instruction related to their behavior or their communication or some disability, they, the IEP team discusses whether or not they need an additional adult on the bus, the regular ed bus, or whether they need specialized transportation, and if that's the case, they have a van. So those people have training, like the, the ed techs who ride the bus, or the teachers or whatnot that are riding the bus with folks. So Scott, I don't know if you wanna answer that differently, since you're in charge of the bus drivers?
Great answer.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I, I guess I just know, I'm just thinking, and maybe I, the whole bus driver thing just kinda, it feels like a contained environment but separate from itself, and yes, there is someone on there, but it's, it's a rowdy environment sometimes, and I just, I feel like that I didn't hear that we got a lot of training for the bus drivers particularly, and I think that concerns me.
Yeah, I think we always want the bus drivers to stay driving the bus. That's their job, is to keep their eyes on the road, driving the bus, and that if there's a student who's struggling, somebody else is on the bus to help that student who's struggling. We don't want the safety of the other kids to be put in jeopardy by the driver taking their eyes off the road in any way.
Okay, so it sounds like we should, they, they potentially could get some more training.
Well, one of the other things is, one of the other things is, is there also has been training done by some of the staff at MIW with our bus drivers on behavioral issues on buses, so that's taken place. The other thing is, is that the bus drivers also get just regular training. We have in-service days. And then we also, it's what they used to call the rodeo back in my day, where they go to, there's a conference where bus drivers are allowed to go to a conference for, you know, for driving skills, et cetera, okay?
And then the other, I think I mentioned the lunchroom staff and the custodians. Is there any training for that staff directly, or I'm assuming there is, it just didn't, no?
Scott would defer to Scott on that one.
Custodians get training on material safety data sheets and things of that nature that they need. With food service, they get training in food safety.
I think you would answer the other questions. I kinda put notes on, so thank you.
I've had several experiences where the child on the bus, the child from school with an IEP has had a plan for gum. And they get on the bus, and the bus driver's like, no gum. And so the bus driver didn't have any idea that the child had that in his IEP. And so how do we, how do we make that match?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we work pretty hard to, at each of the buildings to work through that. I don't know if that was a sub-bus driver or if that was a miscommunication, so certainly if there's a specific case that we should follow up on, I'm happy to take that feedback, or the building's happy to take that feedback, because we do try to work on that. I don't certainly wanna get into specifics tonight, but certainly, I mean, Scott oversees the bus drivers supervisory-wise, and certainly I think any of the buildings would be happy to take that feedback, and I'm happy too if there's a case that we need to follow up on specifically.
Megan, Jessie?
I'm okay. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Katie, you're good? Okay. I just had one additional question. I know you talked about the embedded professional model, and I know through my three years on the board, that's come up a few times about how we're investing in that, and how unique is this to our school districts?
So when we started it, there was a couple of districts around us that worked with me to start just, they had a couple of OTs that they embedded in their functional life skills program. I am not aware, there could be, I'm just not aware, of other districts that have any functional life skills, any social workers or speech also embedded, so I don't know of any others, but I do know that there are a couple of districts in Cumberland County that have some embedded OTs in their life skills program.
That's great, and so I guess to follow on, so students who need those services, would they have to be going elsewhere to get them, or is it just like a?
No, so we have, we have building-based clinicians as well who are servicing students, but so for like an example, you might have a student who has an IEP for behavioral. But so for like an example, you might have a student who has an IEP for behavioral disability, like an autism or an ADHD or anxiety or depression or something like that. And they may have a social work services that is two o'clock on Tuesday, right? That is their ordered time. And that student might actually need social work four times between now and two o'clock on Tuesday. But they, their scheduled time is two o'clock on Tuesday. And our social workers in the buildings work really hard to make themselves available those four times between now and two o'clock on Tuesday. But there are 14 other kids that also need them between now and two o'clock on Tuesday that have scheduled times that they're also trying to see when our, when our embedded professionals are able to be right there, right available, working in the moment, pre-teaching stuff, processing what just happened at recess, working through a peer conflict. Nothing's bubbling up at that point. Nothing's waiting on the burner till two o'clock on Tuesday. And our providers that are in the general milieu are able to be getting to all of those other 14 kids that are lined up at their door and have their scheduled appointments because the embedded professional is working with our students in those wraparound programs.
Great. Thank you.
So I just have one more thing, which is thank you from the bottom of my heart. My brother, I just want to share this quickly. My brother was diagnosed with ADHD when he was 17. He was one of the first kids, this was in Southern California, mid eighties. And by then, school was, was a late diagnosis. He was always the bad kid, you know, the bad kid in the class because he was never diagnosed with it. And flash forward to however many years later, I was a teacher, you know, came in to help with the classroom as a parent. And there was a little boy who reminded me so much of my brother. And he had a sheet of paper with scissors, glue, a pencil, things like that. And each time he did a step, he would take, it was Velcroed and he would take it off. And I just sat there and my jaw dropped thinking about what a difference that would have made for my brother to have that very simple thing. And this boy was so excited to do the project because he, you know, could do that step by step. So when I was asking you earlier what it would look like, it's because I wanted you to be able to say that publicly. What, what a difference that makes for a kid to be able to function in the classroom and love school from an early age. So, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
I do have a question. So I want to be upfront and say, I think all of the services you talked about are totally worthwhile. My son got MTSS and he needed some help and he doesn't need it now. So if the system is working, but since we're going to talk about the budget and I know we have a lot of people here who are very interested. So special education services is 10 million out of 50 million, right? It's 20% of our budget. And so I know there's folks who are going to vote the budget down no matter what and they've said so. I know there are folks who think there's a lot of fluff in this budget and have said so. And so I want to ask you, of that $10 million, what's the fluff that we can cut? What, what kids do you think we could cut services for? And would, would, would it be detrimental to those kids? I personally think that we need to support all of the kids in our community, not just the high achieving students and not just the athletes, but everybody. So is there fluff we can cut? And if we cut that fluff, is it going to have a negative impact on students?
Yeah. So I don't think special education is fluff and I don't think it's an area that you can cut. I think that our students with disabilities do cost money. We also get a higher return on those students when we get money back from the state. And that is something that Scott can talk about way better than me because I don't do the budget on that end of, side of things. Scott is able to talk about that much more fluidly than me. But every dollar that we put in is exactly Kim's story. That is, our students deserve the programming that we give them. And the law requires us to provide demonstrable programming for students, adequate program for students to make demonstrable progress. And that's what we provide them. We're not providing Taj Mahal programming. We're not providing students, you know, glitz and glamour. We are providing students what they require to access their education. And for a student to access their education, it may look different for me to access than it looks for Tim to access. And Tim deserves what he needs in order to access his education. And if that's costs a little bit more money because Tim has a disability, it is his right as a member of this community to have what he needs to access his education. And I feel very passionately about that. And as you can see from my data, we are not over identifying students. We are not placing students into an overbuilt system just to sort of cash in, to charge more money to our taxpayers. We are really being thoughtful about who requires specially designed instruction and who requires an IEP. And those are the students who we are providing services to. And students who don't require services, like your son, is accessing general ed supports through MTSS. And so there isn't fat in that budget. There just isn't. And Jeff has worked very hard and challenged me at every corner to reduce the budget. And we have reduced that at every corner that we can possibly reduce it in the area of special education. And I don't know of any fat and I think that our students would suffer if we cut more in special education. I do. I, I, I think that is a decision for the board to make and I appreciate, you know, the support that we've had. And I think that if cuts were made, I think Kim already asked that question, what would it look like? It would look like higher caseloads. It would look like less supported students. It would likely look like more behavioral episodes. It would, it would, it would look like less specially designed instruction. It would look like less progress. That, that's what it would look like.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as we move in to the next presentation, which is really the kickoff of the budget section, I do want to note for those of you who didn't see the, the nice copies of the budget by the door, they're over there if you would like a copy. I do have a sign-in sheet if you do want to comment during the public hearing. So how this is gonna, the kind of the flow for the next, I don't know, however long we decide. We're going to have the budget summary presented by Superintendent Porter. We're going to have the public hearing, which will consist of a similar format to how we do public comment. The, the difference will be, we'll be taking notes, listening to questions throughout the comment. And if there are questions that we can respond to tonight, we will try to if possible. But I always welcome everyone to email the board questions at any time, any time throughout the year, but especially during budget season. So if you ask a question and we weren't able to answer it this evening, please also, I mean, a lot of things we may need to take back. And please also, like I said, never hesitate to email us. You don't need to wait for a meeting. But I'm so glad to see everyone here. So I will now hand it over to our superintendent to do the budget summary.
Thank you. So this is my last presentation on the budget this, this season. And it officially gets turned over to the board tonight through your decision, whatever your decision is to vote to adopt the budget in whatever form. This is the recommended budget summary. But I'd like to thank the finance committee, Kim Vine, Sarah Rose and Sean Thurston. I have, we have so many committees. Did I, did I get that right? And then I'd like to thank, what's that?
You got them all.
Thank you. I thought you said Adam. Like to thank Scott Poole and our finance director and Christine Gerard, our finance manager, for their amazingly hard work on getting all of this together because we're talking about a lot of moving parts. So here's our summary. These are adjustments. Just want to start this evening. Every time I do the presentation, initial presentation on the, on the upcoming budget, I start with a place and then there's things that move and the finance committee helps with these items. These are major items that have moved some way or another since March 6th. So we had a health insurance increase. We had budgeted 10% for health insurance for all of our staff members. A 10% hike, aggregate hike. And we ended up coming in with 13% from the main benefits trust. And as a result, we're up 203,000 more than we initially had budgeted. So generally, we're usually pretty on target. But the trust this year had a shortfall and they were trying to make up that shortfall. And the increases went up more than, than were expected, I think, for most districts. In the legal line, I had recommended initially that we increase our legal line by $50,000. We have brought that down at half of that, 50%. So we're now recommending that when looking at budget to actuals, I think we feel comfortable increasing that line by 25,000 instead of 50. The next line, we were going to replace one of the vans. We have not replaced a van since we started purchasing vans back, I think in 2019. And this is the only van that we have with a wheelchair, but it is rusting out. However, it is still serviceable. And we had put a lease purchase amount of 46,000 in over a three-year period. We've decided to forego the van and we will, in the hopes that that van will get through another year. We're going to fix the rust, said Scott. We already did. But we're hoping that it will get through another year. So we are delaying that lease purchase another, another year. We also have an existing lease purchase on a van from previously that we are, the last year is next year. And we're going to try to pay that off with year-end funds. So that would save 67,000 on that lease purchase. So that's an amount that we'd like to take out of FY 26 and not have it there. Initially, I had advocated for, and, and so did actually Julie Olson and others, an ed tech three and Mari Trebelcock. In advocating for a new ed tech three, we do not have any support staff for our ESOL program, which is our English language learner program. We have a teacher who is a coordinator, a K through 12 coordinator for the district. And that is the only staff member we have for our ESOL students. Part of the issue is, even though we have an increase in ESOL students, that person, that teacher is now teaching a course, an ASL course, sign language course, as a language requirement at the high school for kids that are interested. We have 35 kids that are interested and we have even more kids that want to do it next year. So we're opening up a second section at the high school for, for ASL. She's the only qualified person in the district who can teach that course. So she'll be spending, you know, almost half or 40% of her time now teaching high school courses and needed support. But we have found another way of producing or helping with those services in the district. And we'll be working with a leadership team. Mari Trebelcock will be working with a leadership team to, to put a model in place that we had initially considered. And then went with this at the end of the day and now we're going back to that model. The next item is maintenance contract services. This is really more of a budget to actual. We look at all of our contractual services and is there any leeway in those lines from year to year? Scott was able to do that with his laser vision that he goes through the budget, every single account, every single number, looks to budget to actuals and found $10,000 since March 6th that he, that we do not need to have in the budget. I had initially recommended a new position, which would be a .25 full-time equivalent, which is a new position, added to a part-time position at the middle school. We have a halftime teacher right now. This would add .25 to make that teach for three quarters time. This is due to rising enrollment at the middle school. We now have almost 60 students, six to eight over a two-year period. We've not increased language teacher services at that district more than just the halftime that we increased this year. And we have more kids coming in next year. So this was to cover that. However, we are transferring a teacher from the high school for one block a day to help with covering a Spanish class at the middle school. And we looked at class sizes and we feel it's not ideal. We feel like we can make that work for another year. We went back to the principals with, this is the second time we've gone back to our school principals and directors and asked them to start, you know, whittling away at their budgets. I can't remember the amount that we had asked last time, but I think it might've been 20,000 total. In the first round, we went back to them and asked them to come up with another 10,000. So that's 10,000 total from the school principals and directors. Custodial supervisor. We have a custodial supervisor that is, that we had in the budget. We had a person in that position. The position's been vacant for a little bit and we decided, instead of filling that position, we decided to remove it from the budget. We have a director of custodial and maintenance services, but this is a night, more of a nighttime supervisor. We also have started moving to a new model where we have lead custodians. And so we want to move in that direction more and we're not going to fill this position. Scott again took another look at budget to actuals, looked at our utility lines, looked at what we think will be increases in inflation and felt comfortable taking another $20,000, remove $20,000 from utilities for next year. And then we have a regular education ed tech three. And this was a hard cut, all of these are hard cuts in some ways, at the high school, helping with intervention support at the high school. However, the high school has come up with a, a different model that they're, we're looking at as we reorganized some services. And we are, I'm recommending at this point that we remove that position from the budget. So there's a net adjustment, even though we had an increase of 203,000 that was not in the budget on March 6th because of the health insurance overage from the, what we thought we were going to have for health insurance for 10% and went to 13%. And then those, those reductions were at a net adjustment reduction of 167,160 dollars since May, March 6th, sorry. So I'm not going to go through this, but you'll see what we did as we updated these numbers. They're slightly updated. And if you go to the bottom of this page, you will see that we're at 7.12% on expenditures. We were at 7.49%, 7.47% on March 6th. And so we were able to, because of those reductions that I just showed you, we were able to bring the expenditure budget down to 7.12%. Again, thank you to the finance committee. It spent hours working with us around some of these priorities as well. And then I've just kind of redlined areas that we've removed or that we have made changes to the budget on the other side. And I know it's small, so it'll be posted.
That matches the one page.
It does. Yeah. It matches, matches your one-page expenditures and your revenues on the one pager. So there's been questions about our legal lines and, you know, why are our legal costs so high? And what are you spending your legal money on? So we did our own internal review and then we asked our law firm for a free accounting, not, we didn't pay them to do it. A free accounting of the services that they provide to us. So we did not pay them to do this and I want to make that very clear. And we went back to fiscal years, basically the fiscal year we're in and we went back to FY 24, which was last year, and looked at all of our, our, what we're spending. So we spent 244,647 dollars in FY 24, which is 2023-24. And you can see that the, the lion's share of that amount is, was spent on labor. Labor is collective bargaining and any sort of labor-related actions such as grievances that are brought forward or things that might go to the labor board or anything along those lines that are brought forward by the association. So we had 59.3% of all of our legal expenses in 23-24. If you recall, we had protected, protracted negotiations with our ed techs, which was part of that year, the first part of that year. And then the majority of that was really the teacher negotiations, which was about six months of FY 24. There was a lot of costs involved. We also had a number of grievances that were brought forward during that period. That adds up to that 59%. Can say, see that we spent just under 15% on student-related issues. That's any sort of issues that are involving students in our district that require some sort of legal review. About 7% on finance. So good job, Scott. You don't really need a lot of support in that area, only using 7%. And that's usually around our budget documents and making sure our warrants are in order, things like that usually pertain to that, that category. Employment related, which would be our staffing, anything beyond negotiations, grievances, labor board, any of those things. Just regular employment related issues that come up. Personnel issues would be in this category. It's 18%. And then special education, you can see a 0.8%. That's a tiny bit deceptive, I will tell you, because in the world of special education, if something goes into a legal situation, sometimes sometimes tho- those pieces are covered by our insurance carrier. So in this case, in this year, there were a couple of issues that were covered by insurance, so you wouldn't necessarily see that on here.
Jeff, just to clarify, it's, this year it's three-point-six, right, percent? Are you looking at the, I'm looking at the right year, like it's.
Oh, I was talking about twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm still, sorry, I'm in FY twenty-four.
Okay.
So now I'm moving to FY twenty-five, which is the current year that we're in. Obviously, we haven't completed the year, but we've already spent a hundred-and-forty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars to date. And you can see, again, the labor, the negotiations, grievances, et cetera, is lower percentage, forty-seven-point-three percent. That's because we did have negotiations going on with the teachers' union for the first several months of the school year. But because we have not been negotiating, we, the board settled that contract back in January. That obviously, those expenses really went down. Also, we haven't had as many grievances this particular year. Student issues are about twenty-six percent, finance, five-point-eight percent. Scott, you're just going right in the right direction, again, around the warrants and anything that keeps us solvent. Employment, around eighteen percent. Again, those are personnel issues that arise. That really hasn't changed much in the last year. And then special education, three-point-six percent, again, pretty minimal in terms of legal services for those. So that, those questions have come up, and it was raised by the association president at the last board meeting. There were some comments that were made by the association president two weeks ago, in this public meeting, that were factually inaccurate around legal costs and initiation of legal activities. And so I wanted to make sure that people understood where this is coming from and that the MSAD fifty-one does not initiate, never has, never will probably initiate any sort of legal action. We respond to legal activities. We do not initiate legal activities. I've sent a letter to the association, copy of the board of directors, and a copy of the leadership team of this district. And I have, that letter went to the association president, outlining my concerns with his factually untrue statements. FY twenty-six budgeted revenue, the revenues have not changed since March sixth. So you'll see that our revenues are remaining consistent. If anything changes with state subsidy, and that would be state money, not, we're not talking about federal money, this is general fund. We have gotten no word of that. Generally, what we receive for revenues, the lion's share of it is state subsidy amounts. In our case, we're expecting sixteen million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. I will say that a large percentage of that state subsidy goes to help us with special education programs in our district. So the ten million that Jesse was referring to, we also get a lot of assistance from the state and helping us to pay for those services. Students in our district who are special education, depending on their disability, we get their weighted more than other students in our district. So we get funding from the state to help with all of our students. But for students that have special services, depending on their disability, they also will be weighted a little bit higher, and we will get more money for those students as well. Good news on the tax front. I'd like to thank both town managers and Scott working with those town managers and kind of working over and over again to make sure that we're looking at the, the school portion of our taxes and getting a really good, accurate estimate. I had told you back in, on March sixth, that taxes would be around five percent in Cumberland for the school side of things, which would be a dollar twenty-four. So in the weeks since then, town manager Sturgis has looked at the, the growth and value in the town and estimated now that that, the mill rate would decrease for the school portion. So now we're, instead of a dollar twenty-four, it would be eighty-six cents for the school portion, which is now three-point-seven percent increase on taxes as opposed to the five percent that I had presented on March sixth. So that generally happens. We generally see a movement down on taxes between when I initially presented and then when I do this presentation. So what that means is for every hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value, not your market property value, because our, all of our market property values are way inflated today. But the assessed property value that the town gives you for your assessed value, it would be eighty-six dollars per one-hundred thousand dollars. So that's a, hopefully can do the math. And North Yarmouth, the picture is even a little better. I had estimated, we had estimated four percent of a mill rate increase in North Yarmouth, working with town manager Barnes in North Yarmouth. She was able to give us a, a more of a, a number at this point that I think people will be really happy with, thirty-eight cents or one-point-nine percent increase on the mill. So again, that would be thirty-eight dollars per one-hundred thousand dollars, again, of assessed property value, not market. So good news on the tax portion of it. You can see the history of our expenditures and taxes over about the last ten years. You can see that our, our taxes, our tax portion on the school, three-point-seven percent in Cumberland, one-point-nine in North Yarmouth. We have generally been lower than average, lower than our regional competitors on taxes. Yes, our expenditures have gone up over the last three years post-COVID. And we had expenditures that were lower before that. We've had to make up the difference in different places. We also have growing enrollment in our district, which continues to grow. Which means you're adding, you're adding teachers, we have modulators, things like that, that we're, we're taking on. So our expenditures have gone up, but our tax rate really has not changed significantly, thankfully, over the last three years. So here's some regional comparisons. People always want to know, how's, how's our district doing compared to others? So we have about a dozen districts just right around us in this, in the Portland area that you can see, and it is in order. So you can see that on the expenditure side of things, we are higher than, more than half of our competing, or competing districts. However, when you look at the tax side, we're on the lower half of the, the districts around us. So, and North Yarmouth has got the lowest tax effect except for Brunswick, which is at one-point-eight percent. North Yarmouth is at one-point-nine percent, but Cumberland's right up there, three-point-seven percent. Only Falmouth at three-point-three, and Cape at two-point-nine percent are just a little bit lower.
Scott, is that just for this year?
That's just this year.
Okay. And some, and some of those school districts, you know, like, we have a new teacher contract, right? So a number of, a number of those that are below us were ahead of us in paying their teachers, and we're just now catching up, so.
Depends on the cycle.
Yes, some of that time, I was just thinking the same thing, yeah.
Different schools are signing teacher contracts at different times.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point. Here's another way of looking at regional comparisons. The finance committee asked me to throw in some more districts to compare to. We usually compare to our, you know, to Yarmouth and Falmouth at least, because they're right on either side of us, very similar in demographics. And there's two ways to look at per pupil costs, and I think they're both critically important. First, you take your, the gross budget that we're looking at, in our case, it's fifty-three-point-eight million. Take the gross amount for the proposed budget, and you divide it by the number of students in the district. That's how per pupil is calculated. And that's what we call the raw per pupil comparison. So if you look at the raw per pupil with the other districts, we're at twenty-four thousand, just over twenty-four thousand dollars per student. In Yarmouth, it's twenty-four, twenty-five thousand, four fifty-one, and in Falmouth, twenty-six thousand, four seventy-eight. I would say that those comparisons are, are pretty good comparisons, considering our districts are similar in demographics and in many other ways. Look at Freeport, RSU five, the per pupil cost is twenty-one thousand, nine eighty-six. In Wyndham Raymond, twenty-one thousand, nine twenty-six, and in Gray New Gloucester, nineteen thousand, five seventy-two. However, there's another way that we also look at per pupil, and that's taking out all of your revenue, including your state subsidy. State subsidy offsets taxes, we know that. So in MSAD fifty-one, we get seventeen, we have seventeen point, just about seventeen-point-two million in revenue. So you've got to take that out. If you net that out, you have a tax assessment that now is at thirty-six million, six sixty-three, four fifty-three. Now you can adjust your per pupil cost down, taking that revenue out. So in other words, this is the actual assessment that is going to the towns because we've got revenue included. So when you do that for MSAD fifty-one, our per pupil cost dropped to sixteen thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars per student. If you look across the board and do the exact same thing, take out revenue, Yarmouth is at twenty thousand, one twenty-seven, Falmouth's at twenty thousand, six ninety-one, Freeport's at twenty-one thousand, one sixty-nine. Raymond and Wyndham are at fourteen thousand, five twenty-eight, and Gray New Gloucester's at eleven thousand, eight sixty-one. So you can see that there's different ways of looking at those per pupil costs. Here's another way of looking at raw and adjusted. Again, the raw is without revenue taken out, so that would be in blue. And the maroon is in, taking revenue into consideration. That becomes the adjusted per pupil. So just kind of a visual way of looking at what I just showed you in the previous slide. And you can see that, you know, where we stack up with the raw numbers, we're below Yarmouth and Falmouth. And again, we're a little bit higher than Freeport, Wyndham Raymond, and Gray New Gloucester. And when you look at the adjusted per pupil, we're below, again, Yarmouth, Falmouth, and Freeport. And we're slightly above Wyndham Raymond, and then Gray New Gloucester's kind of an outlier there. I've shown this slide before. I usually don't show it until now, but just to remind people, we do get federal money in our districts. We get about nine-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, or we're expecting that much in the current year. We do not have any numbers. Sometimes we have numbers by now, but surprisingly, we have gotten nothing from the federal government in terms of forecasted money for next year. Not really sure what that means. So anyway, and then the year, the year before that, nine-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, we, we got almost the exact same amount for two years in terms of federal assistance. So we do have a backup plan. If we do not have federal money, it would require a board vote to go ahead with the backup plan at this point. Indications are that even if the state of Maine were to lose all of its money and we did not get any federal money, that it would probably be in court, and there would probably be an injunction is what I would expect to happen, which means litigation would go on for a while. In the meantime, we would be receiving federal money during the injunction. And I also just want to say, and it's been in the paper, and I'll just say it out loud, that we are not a defendant in the lawsuit, any federal lawsuit. We are not a defendant for, with the Department of Justice. The Department of Justice has named as a defendant the state of Maine Department of Education and not our district. So either all of the, all of the federal money out of Maine is gone, or all of it stays, depending on that. So it is not just a local piece. And I've said that pretty consistently, I think, from the beginning, that this is a legal issue constitutionally under the US Constitution. There's no relationship between the federal government and a local school district or a local municipality. The relationship is between federal and state. And so the Department of Justice confirmed that by naming as a defendant the Maine Department of Education. Food Service Enterprise Fund, this is what we are estimating. We're obviously two months away, and food services is dynamic. But we're estimating that, and this is again outside the general fund. This has nothing to do with taxes. Federal money doesn't have any impact on taxes either. This, this is money that sits outside the general fund. So year-to-date, our net estimate is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, four twelve. The actual, a year ago, is two-ninety-nine, oh-nine-sevens, so not too far off. So that number comes from looking at our revenues that come in, and then our expenses and seeing what offsets. So that's a positive distribution at the end of the day for both years, which is good news in our district. So it's a self-sufficient fund that sits outside the general fund. Capital projects, this does require having capital reserves. We have, this community has supported capital reserves. Again, capital reserves are not part of the general fund. They sit outside of the general fund and have no tax impact or no tax effect. These are areas that the, the finance committee has, I think we discussed this a little bit. We didn't get into it this year with so many other priorities. We're not looking to do a lot this summer with capital projects because of the One Campus Project and the new school starting. But these are some areas that definitely need our attention and have been on our list. Track resurfacing, the track is getting super old and needs to be resurfaced. We've known that for quite some time. We have an additional two-unit modular at GMS that is going in for enrollment, which is part of the budget. And this work, besides the lease purchase of those two rooms, is, sits outside of the general fund. And that's to support the site work, ramps, sprinklers, electrical, technology, phone, security, all that, that gets those two rooms up and ready for students. Tile replacement, we have replaced some common tile in the hallways at both High School and Mabel I. Wilson School. The summer, we'd like to continue that, especially that huge, long hallway down, high school that goes from the gym all the way down past the library. That's a well-traveled hallway. It is old, and we'd love to get that tile replaced. It's chipping in a lot of places. Same thing with Wilson School. We started tiling, and there's a lot of areas on that, especially in that first floor where the first grade wing is and some kindergarten rooms. Like to get some more tile done there. There's a lot of chipping that's going on there. And continue painting. We did a lot of painting last year. We had a company come in and just, we hadn't really done any painting for years. And just getting all those classrooms and common areas and continuing with that. We won't be doing nearly as much as we did last summer. We'd like to continue what we started. And also through the SRRF project, we were able to do forty percent of the windows and doors at Mabel I. Wilson School. They're just almost done now from that state money that we've received. But we know that there's windows that need to continue to be replaced, and we need to continue working on that. Obviously, we can't get them all done in one budget cycle, but just as a continuation of what we started. And finally, we also received state money, as you know. We were hoping to do this project last summer, which was to use that, I think it was a million dollars that we were awarded in state funds. Half of, about half of it was forgiven by the state. The other half was at zero percent interest. And it will rehab the science wing, all the HVAC fixtures at the, in the science wing at the high school will be rehabbed. So we're excited. We just received the bids yesterday. And we are taking the low bidder, and we'll be bringing that to the board at your next meeting to get approval so that we can move forward with that contract and make that award so that we can get this done this summer. And finally, a budget summary. So if we wanted to say, and I hate to use this phrase, but bumper sticker this budget, here it is. Salary and benefits, this is a, you know, an investment, the board has made an investment in personnel this year, which is a significant investment. Very much support that. We need to be supporting our staff. The teacher's contract was settled. We're in negotiations with the EdTechs right now. And we've also settled other units in our district recently. But this is a big, because of inflation and helping our staff to keep pace with, with the economic conditions. Eighty-seven percent of the budget increase being proposed is, goes towards salary and benefits. The budget is responsive to continued enrollment increases. Our, we continue to grow as a district as we have since two thousand and fifteen. New proposals are balanced with thoughtful reductions, so this wasn't just add, add, add. It was add, 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 take a look at where we're at and make some decisions about things that we needed to also reduce. There's a backup plan, as I've mentioned, for federal funding loss. There's a greater percentage of this budget that's going to, directly to the classroom. The state average of sixty-eight percent of a budget goes. The state average is sixty-eight percent of a budget goes directly to the classroom. We have been flat at seventy-two percent for a while, probably five or six years. And we're now, um, we're increasing, uh, to seventy-four percent, which is thankfully to the board in, in making those investments. And finally, the school tax effect, the, for the school portion of a tax bill, um, that you get from municipality is, um, below the rate of inflation, and I would say well below the rate of inflation at this point. Uh, Cumberland, three point seven percent, and North Yarmouth, one point nine percent. So, good news to this community. And finally, these are the budget next steps. May eighth, Thursday, seven o'clock, uh, in the Art Center will be the District Budget Meeting, very important meeting. And on Tuesday, June tenth, uh, is Budget Validation Referendum. By the way, the budget meeting, again, for the second year in a row, is two weeks earlier to allow for full absentee balloting in both towns. And then on Wednesday, June eighteenth, um, and you'll notice it's a Wednesday, not a Thursday. Um, and the reason it's not Thursday is because it's Juneteenth on June nineteenth, so we would not have a board meeting on a holiday. So Wednesday, June eighteenth, is when the board would certify the results of the budget, um, validation referendum.
Thank you. Um, and again, I want to say thank you to you and Scott and the Finance Committee, um, for all the work that was done, which also then includes the other administrators who I know were asked multiple times
Three times.
to go back, um, and make some pretty hard decisions and, and, um, budget cuts, um, within our programming. Um, I know that, uh, you know, a lot of detailed work and, and going back over and over again, these numbers, um, has, has happened and um, we, we do feel that the school budget itself is pushed up. We know, you know, the towns, they have a little more time than we do on this budget, um, which is why, you know, tonight our item for action, um, is to be able to vote to, to send this warrants for the District Budget Meeting on the eighth. And so I just want to give the board some time to ask any additional questions before we go to the public hearing. Um, I, I know, um, that a lot of conversations have happened to be able to get us find more ways to, to save money. Um, so we could absorb some of the health increases that have happened over the past few weeks. Um, I know I have a couple additional questions, but I also want to give, um, other board members a chance to ask any additional questions they may have, especially on some of the changes that have happened since the last time we reviewed this.
Can you send this out?
Yes, I will send this to the board, this presentation. Yeah.
Thanks.
I, the reason I don't send it out prior to the meeting is that we're literally are still working on it prior to me.
It's just really hard to see from here.
I know, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Uh, Tim, I know you have. I know you're like patiently waiting. I was looking this way first. Okay, not seen.
Okay. Um, so, I have so many thoughts and questions, um, but some of this might not be my only swing at it. Um, but from a process question, I know we're gonna have the public come up tonight and provide feedback. I know we'll all have questions to hear too. So what if there is work still to be done based off the feedback that we hear tonight? Either internally here or from the public. What does that look like from a process standpoint with where we're at?
That's a great question. So, we have the warrants prepared based on the information that the Finance Committee deliberated on the other night. However, the board always has the ability to, um, make a decision at this meeting because you're voting to adopt this budget. So you can make a motion that is different from what is being recommended by, by, it's, I'm recommending something, but I really worked with the Finance Committee to get to this point.
So we would make a motion being like, we approve this budget if we do such and such and such.
Or you can, you can actually, I mean, technically, you can put out a different number than the one that is being recommended.
Okay.
Now, I will say, and I will have Scott, I'll defer to Scott on this because he handles all of the paperwork. The warrants are done. Obviously, we would have to adjust the warrants before they're signed if the board makes a different decision than the one that's being recommended tonight. Scott, do you want to add anything to that? Cause you do all that paperwork.
Yeah. The, um, the war- the warrants that we have, um, have to be posted in the community seven days before the May eighth meeting. So, uh, and so that has to have time for a meeting of the board
Okay.
to go back in and re-adopt and call the, uh, meeting, adopt the amounts, and then that would also affect the warrants for the referendum. And so there would be work that'd have to be done. So you'd have to do a fairly quick turnaround, uh, in order to do that. Um, and the warrants then gets counter-signed by the council and the selectmen. Um, and those have to be posted ten days prior to the budget validation referendum, so.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. And then, so one of the things that's, I look at this and I, I've seen a lot of school budgets. This is like very, for this type of district that we are, and then you hear some of the expectations of I think the narrative of luxuries, I think. I don't see a lot of that in here. I, in fact, I see more. I'm concerned that we, we don't have money in certain areas and I also I also would question more of like, we're spending that money that's appropriate, but is it impactful money? Do we need to look at ways to spend that money? But like, let's for example, a better technology system or a better, you know, better this, better not that, not necessarily a shift in money. And so, um, I guess, I guess one of my questions is for Leanne in the sense of we seem to be the end of a chain of events that starts from the town. And in this, in the sense of we're growing enrollment, right? We, we take on a lot of the burden of making sure that our students, that we can support the students based off the decisions that are not done at this table. And so you work with the, like, the various town managers and select board chairs. Is there a, like, conversation around how they are part of this challenge? And how they can support some of the tax burdens that we're forced into in part because of that? Because I don't, I don't want our kids, like, if we talk about special education, to suffer because we want to develop downtown a bunch of townhouses, but no businesses down there that like help supplement or like, like, help us from a tax impact. So like, what, like, what sense do you have from there? Is there any movement for support that's not just in this board but outside? Or is it on us?
That's what I feel like I've been talking about since I got on the board. We need to diversify our tax base. I mean, that's just how, the only way that we can alleviate pressures on individual homeowners.
And do you feel like they're on board with that?
I think there's, in Cumberland, there's more opportunities for development that is commercial.
Yeah.
And I know that those are conversations that happen. I don't know how quickly any of that works. I, I do have the sense, and I live in North Yarmouth, um, that there's not as, one, there's just not a spot that's as good other than maybe downtown that would be like a commercial hub. Um, so, that, those have been the conversations that I always come back to. The only way that we're gonna alleviate the pressures on individual homeowners is to diversify how we tax the tax base.
It just frustrates me in the sense that like, this is one of our, our biggest assets here, right, the school. And yet, it seems like a lot of the time for us to relieve some of the burden, which we have to do. There is a burden on our taxpayers. It has to be at the expense of our greatest asset and not something else. And so that, that's my soapbox kind of thing as I think about this. I do think there are, there are savings. I want to be I think we have to be sensitive and we have a responsibility to do our due diligence. So that is, here's my actual, uh, budget question. So, this is really detailed, this sixty pages. But, um, Scott, like, some of this are still roll-up. Like, there, there's still rolled up expenses in some of these line items. Like, if I, you could break a, a line item down, probably even further than it is. So, does, has the Finance Committee seen anything more than this? Like, have we gone even deeper into the budget to say like, we don't need to spend forty thousand dollars on these Clorox things. We can spend forty, like, twenty thousand dollars on the generic brand or something like that. Like, have we gone to that level of detail in the budget, in the Finance Committee, to, to find savings that way?
As questions have come up, we have. So if questions have come up, we have a detail for every one of the schools and we've gone through those spreadsheets and talked about those items. And, um, you, most of those items that you're talking about, Tim, it's really starts at zero in the schools and then comes up from there. So, especially a lot of the things in technology, a lot of the things in supplies, equipment and things of that nature, so.
Okay.
The more things that roll up are more to have to do with staffing than it is a lot of the widgets in the district.
Okay. And then my last question is just from a rollover perspective, what, I know, I mean, I dealt with a lot of schools that had certain grants that you had to spend, like, I honestly spent one day spending sixty thousand dollars in office supplies because we were gonna lose that money and it was a horrific day once. And so like, potential for rollover, if we don't spend everything this year, and let's say things are cheaper, we find ways throughout the year. How can, is there any way to like, put that back or how do you typically, what's your philosophy of putting that back into next year's cycle to make sure that like, that money is not just a this-year thing, that we can roll that over and put it towards so next year, our expenses, our expenses go down?
Yeah. Actually, the Finance Committee and the boards over the years have actually talked about that same thing, Tim. And so, if there is fund balance at the end of the year, which there usually will be fund balance, um, what we look at first is paying off some of our debts, like some of our lease purchases, so they don't carry forward. And that you pay off and you aren't paying interest on those leases. The other things we look at, are there things that we could, um, uh, look at that are capital items? So, much like the municipalities, the towns, if they have fund balance at the end of the year or they collect extra excise tax or whatever it is, they'll put money into a capital reserve account, which is what we do. We do the same thing. And that's how we fund the, the infrastructure repairs to a lot of our schools. The other thing is, if you have a fund balance, which you should have, all right, and we anticipate probably having a fund balance, um, cumulative at the end of this year of about two point five million dollars, but that's cumulative of several years because we've moved money to capital. Um, so if we have two point five million, that two point five million is gonna go to offset the debt service. We have a plan to use that over a three-year period. And I think there's a video of me online here somewhere that's, that's talking about that on how we literally take that fund balance and stare, and apply it over a three-year period to when our debt service drops off in twenty thirty-one. So we're softening that impact over a period of years and bringing it on like walking up a set of stairs. Then we start walking down the stairs after that. So, so that's what we would do with that, and that would be the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks, Leanne, for letting me.
No, no, and, and that is the intention of our next joint meeting, is to have that longer-term planning conversations, just so we can understand what is being planned in the next, you know, five years. I mean, none, none of these projects appear overnight.
No.
So, there's definitely information that I think can be shared to be part of this discussion.
And that's something that's been planned through the whole school project. I mean, we picked our heads up, we looked out over the horizon and said, how are we gonna soften this, soften this impact of this debt? And get us to twenty thirty-one when our debt drops off. So that was purposeful and a plan to do that.
Yeah, I, uh, can I just respond to Tim for a second too? Um, about the, you know, kind of, at the end of the day, we are, you know, in some ways, taking it out on education. I'm not saying it the way I want to right now. But, you know, it, this is a long process, right? And there's a lot of decisions that are made. Um, and this is a very attractive community. People want to live here. People want to build their homes here. This is a good school system and it has been for a long time. Um, and yet, we, these are, if you look at the reductions, so the reductions I just showed you was only obviously part of the story. The board knows that on March sixth, these were also reductions that we, um, put forward, one point, just over one point two million. Obviously, some of it is retiring debt service. But there's also staffing adjustments and reductions that we've made to this, to this, um, budget. Um, along with, uh, many other items, technology, books and software, uh, that was already made. Um, and so, you know, we have to make those efforts to balance things out. And I'm not saying that you, we shouldn't do that. We should always be looking at our class sizes. We should always be looking at those pieces and that's important. Um, but I, I think we've gotten into a cycle to get our expenditures down over the last three years to even seven point one-two percent this year. Um, and I think it was six point eight, uh, percent last year. We've had to make some pretty tough decisions too. Again, part of the process, gotta make tough decisions. Um, I think some people would argue that we probably are going a little too far in that direction uh, in order to get those expenditures down. But we have to do that and we know that. That's a reality that we're, that we're dealing with, so. Um, good question, I just wanted to say.
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to add to that, that I think we talked about at the March meeting but didn't talk about as strictly tonight, is we continue to have increases in enrollment. And so a lot of the adjustments are that we, you know, our class sizes have, have gone up in ways that we've had to add new teachers to accommodate the additional students. And a lot of those students right now are in the middle grades. And so that's why a lot of what we're seeing um, in additions is at the middle school, including the, uh, additional, um, portables. I never want to use that word again. Um, modular, sorry, that word either. Um, and so, that, we're, we're continuing to find, need to find ways to support additional students. And of course, we get additional state funding because of that. That's why our state funding numbers are going up. Where a lot of other districts, they're having to cut because their student enrollment is going down, which means their funding is going down. Um, and I know since our March meeting, you know, the work that I've been doing to try to better understand, okay, what else can go? It really is, we would have to make programmatic changes. Like, we would have to decide that a type or a way that we're running programs right now, that we are going to change that. And, and my belief, that's not something that we can do in the next week or two. Um, I appreciate so much the Finance Committee. We've had a lot of turnover on the board. Um, none of us are in our second term. Um, which means, we haven't also had consistency on the Finance Committee. And I'm really hoping we have this Finance Committee for another year because I think that will also help better to continue to dig down, understand these numbers. And if we are thinking that we need to make programmatic changes because of the, of the continued rise, that we need to start that conversation now for next year. This is not a like, this week, next week, by the May eighth meeting. This is, we need to have that conversation now to start saying, okay, if we are needing to come in at a certain place next year, what are we gonna have to do over this next year to get there for next year's budget? And, and this is on top of the fact that we're already needing to make programmatic changes because of the grade configuration. So that is work that, I mean, there is so much work, these administrators. Um, the work that they are putting in to get us ready for two years from now is extraordinary because we are reconfiguring every little human that's in each of these buildings are gonna be of different ages. And there's different programming that has to go along with that. Um, and they're being so thoughtful to get ready for that. Um, and that's coming, the two years is gonna go by very quick, so they're already thinking about that. But programmatic changes, for me, are the only way that we're gonna see be able to move these numbers down in a way that's appreciatively different. Can we find another ten or twenty thousand? Probably.
Yeah.
Right? Um, are we gonna find another hundred thousand dollars? Not without reduction in force or programmatic changes.
More than, we've already, and we've already done some of that already. Some programmatic changes are in those initial reductions that, um, that we showed you back in March. So these were just additional reductions to those reductions that we have already made. But I appreciate, Leanne, you saying about the administrative, because we only have thirteen administrators in the district and they are actually doing two jobs right now. So they're, they're spending a lot of time, not only working on the day-to-day stuff that they always do, but getting ready for the two years from now. We have this whole timeline of things that must be done. And one of them is to reconfigure and reinvent all of the grade spans pre-K through eight. And that is not simple. You start with a, a generic roster and then we start making things work programmatically. Um, and then we've got to bring all of that to the board. And the Finance Committee is gonna eventually get that. And by the way, Kim, I don't think it's gonna be this, this year. Um, we are, it, it's a bigger job than we thought, so we're now thinking September. So, um, that's all in play. So I appreciate you saying that. That's really important.
So other budget?
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
So, um, I missed out on last meeting, but I know that the plan, um, of, or the discussion of the plan to move the high school English teacher to the middle school was discussed. Um, and I was able to watch public comment as well as the stance of Sophia, um, the fellow student rep, whose viewpoint I really do share, um, because I had the specific teacher in my eighth grade English class and I could speak for hours on her abilities and talents, which and I could speak for hours on her abilities and talents, which so clearly to her students especially, would be much more, much best targeted and utilized by a higher age group of students. And so, I was just kind of wondering, assuming, of course, that this is still in action, that someone could speak about the importance and necessity for some clarity on my part.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Katie, I can't talk about the specific people involved, because it's personnel right now that we're still working through. However, the need for that piece came from, we have a leadership model at the high school, and we talk in FTEs and the world of education, so full-time equivalent, and we have one point four full-time equivalent teachers who get released for a block to do leadership work in the, in the school, in the high school. And that was a model that years ago was put in at the high school, the high school principal at the time recommended it, and the board supported it, I, I supported it. But it takes teachers out of the classroom for those six blocks, basically, because each one is a different content teacher. So this budget calls for pushing those teachers back into the classroom, for want of another word. They are reassigned back to teaching during that block that they would be doing leadership work with the principal and assistant principals. So instead of doing that, we're now paying them a stipend to do it outside of the school day, which is a less expensive model. And because we have the capacity now at the high school, with one point four teachers going back to the classroom during those blocks, we can reassign a teacher to a different building, because we have more capacity. So I don't know if that makes sense, but it actually, it increases teaching time at the high school by point four. And I'm talking all these points, but it actually had, allows two content teachers to be in the classroom beyond what we had before at the high school. So it actually increases capacity in the classroom.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions?
Jeff, could you remind everyone, or just sort of spell out, it's seventy-three percent of our budget goes to the classrooms?
Uh, just, just under seventy-four, it's very close.
Just under seventy-four, yeah, okay, so the other twenty-six plus percent, what is included in that?
So it's, it's pretty much everything else, it's debt service, it's technology, it's transportation, it's not food services, that's, it's outside, it's custodial maintenance. It's the utilities, turning on the, the heat and everything else that goes into the district. It's any sort of capital, small capital improvements that we make, the summer projects, or whatever things to get fixed around the district, it's the legal cost. Pretty much anything, I guess you could call it, I don't wanna call it overhead, but anything that keeps the place going. And that's, that's the twenty-six percent.
So you could argue it's even higher because that classroom has heat?
Yes, if you wanna put the heat in, yes, you can increase it, yes.
And that, the child gets to go to school to get to the classroom, so, yeah, you could manipulate those numbers a bit. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Sure.
Comment statement.
Go for it.
So I've spent much of the, I'm gonna kind of read it a little bit, so apologies. I've spent much of the last week to ten days fielding questions from North Yarmouth community members, and there are a lot of questions, questions about the turf timing, questions about the increases in salaries for administrative, administration and teachers, and of course, the impact of the Title IX disputes. The community as a general, this is my personal generalization, wants the district to know that they support the kids and the teachers, and that they feel the district does a great job, but they are struggling to finance it. I have worked on the budget, and I've asked questions, Jeff and Scott have answered every question, because I told them I'd ask a lot. I assured them, I warned them. I have asked for more trimming at each meeting, and they have been thoughtful with the responses, and sometimes convinced me that more trimming was not appropriate in that location. As a committee, that we have worked to keep the cuts away from the classroom, the kids, the teachers and the supports. We've considered what are things that we would kick down the road, and if we're kicking it two years down the road, let's just pause that, and what, personally, it kind of piggybacks a little bit on what Tim was saying without collaboration. I, you know, I would love for the full board to have the opportunity to take a deep dive into the budget, and I only say that because more eyes and more questions, and curious to see what other people could see, now, we kind of hit upon that as level of reasonable. I would also like to talk about raising revenue. To the towns of Cumberland and North Yarmouth, we need businesses to help offset the rising taxes. We need to be apprised of the developments, so that those potential students can be included in the outlook. To the district, I'd like to think about how we can increase our revenue by renting out facilities more, especially with the addition of the turf field. Personally, I cannot increase my rates and tuition at my childcare by six to eight percent. I will simply lose clients, and my clients are my kids. And to note, this year, I have five kids that are going into kindergarten, and the other five are going to a public pre-K program. So for the first time in probably fifteen years, I'm rewriting my program. That's my thought.
Thank you, Sarah. And I appreciate all your questions, by the way. Other, Jesse?
So the one thing that I, I think we could save money on, not this year, but going forward is, so, looks like we spent like two point two million dollars on utilities, basically, it's mostly natural gas and electricity. And I happen to know some of our buildings are pretty old, I know our new building's gonna be built to a pretty tight standard, and so I think the new school will be pretty energy efficient, but I know several of our buildings are incredibly energy inefficient, so, you know, I, I think that should be a call to action for us going forward is to, you know, I don't think there's two point two million dollars of savings, we've still gotta pay those utilities, but, you know, I'm sure if we do a blower test on the pool, there's a ton of heat going out the door, so. I know, I helped write a grant for the school to get some technical assistance from the state, they're gonna do that for free, they'll give us some findings, so that hopefully we'll come back to the board and we'll be able to spend, spend some money to save money going forward, because I think, you know, it's just a reoccurring cost. Electricity's not gonna get cheaper, natural gas ain't gonna get cheaper, so it's two point two million dollars this year, it's gonna be two point four next year, it's gonna keep going up, so if we can lessen that going forward, I think we should put that on our to-do list.
Yeah, and we appreciate the grant, and the, the committee that worked on that in the town, we appreciate that. That audit is taking place, scheduled to take place this coming week, so, thank you.
Yeah, we really look forward to seeing what opportunities are there. Other?
I, I just wanted to make a comment, just sitting in on the, from an outside perspective, over the years, being a town resident for a very long time, and not knowing what Scott and Jeff and the finance committee does when they go through this process, and kind of, kind of broadened my perspective when I was there in the meeting, and kind of went line by line, and kind of got a better grasp of where all the costs go. So I felt a lot better after I sat through many meetings and many hours, and many of my own hours researching it, now that I felt I had more data and access to the data. And I think as a school district, these two people do a very good job answering all the questions, and trying to find every little ounce they can to still meet the child's needs, and understand that the taxpayers and, you know, us up here, all of us, have to pay that bill as well. So when I looked at the numbers, I looked at things that aren't really tabulated together, because in my brain, most of how the budget is written doesn't make it easy to, to like, digest it very well. So one of the areas that I, when I look at it, and I know we have zero control over this, but a large percentage of our budget, I mean, I didn't go, I got through most of it before this meeting, but I didn't get all the way through. So looking at like MIW and GMS four through five, the cost of health insurance for the district is somewhere like around fifteen percent of the total budget for MIW is healthcare. And sixteen percent for GMS four through five is healthcare, and we have no control over that. We don't get to make a decision on that, the, it's part of, I mean, Scott could probably talk to it more, but it's tough to stomach that when you don't have control over that much of your budget. So. Right, there we go.
Were you right?
Yeah, so seven million fifty-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars for healthcare. That's a lot of programs we can help a lot of kids with, and I understand that our teachers need healthcare, don't get me wrong, that's very important. But as a community, I think if we can spend this much time looking at the budget, I think we can also outreach to our representatives and other individuals within the state and the country to try to alleviate that issue. Because it affects all our local businesses, it affects our school, it affects all of us. So I think it's a big chunk of change that would love to go down.
And that's not the only thing, there's a lot of things, like you said, that are mandated from either federal or state that we have to do, for example, the, the newest is the, the Leave Act, which required both fiscal years, we've had to put new money into our budget to cover fifty percent of all of our staff members' leave into that new main law that just was passed a year ago. So these are, and, and this happens all the time, there's new regulations and laws that we, we have to follow, and we have to put money into the budget to cover those. So, so at this point, yeah, we had a hundred and sixty-seven thousand added this year, and we added the same amount last year for the fifty percent of the, to pay for this main law. And the employees pay another side of that, basically, they're paying, and I think we all know this, it's, it's essentially a tax, a payroll tax for our employees, but then we pay the other, the other half from the district. So these are things that are real things, and these are things we must do. And there's so many of these kinds of things in the school district budget, asking about the twenty-six percent. I, I, we could give you a huge list, like workers' comp and liability insurance, liability insurance went up forty percent from this year to next year, forty percent increase in liability insurance. I know all of you that have house insurance and auto insurance, all of them are going up, everything's going up. Districts are like people, our expenses go up too. And that's where the twenty-six percent is, we're dealing with all these inflations on things too. So, good, these are, these are good points, because there's so much that is not controlled by the local districts.
As you mentioned, the MEA health plan is a very rich plan, and it doesn't afford the ability to do HSAs, health savings accounts or anything of that nature, and it's a plan that's basically union-run.
And knowing, being a resident of Cumberland County, and all of us are, that's a state-run program, and it's based on state rates for, this is my understanding, and there's probably some more detail to this, but as a community, usually the Cumberland County, we have lower insurance rates than the rest of the state, because we have.
Experience ratings.
There you go. So we pay through our healthcare the rate for the whole state at that point, then, not based on our county or.
Regions, there's certain regions and stuff that it goes, but it's part of an overall plan. It's, it's a, it's a great health plan, don't get me wrong, but it does have a cost affiliated with it. Thirteen percent this year.
Yeah, that was the same for my organization, and professionally, I work in healthcare costs and helping control those, so we could geek out on this sometime of what we're doing at, in Maine.
Yeah, and the way in which we, the way in which we've controlled our health costs here is the contribution that we'll make to certain plans, other than single or adult with child, so to full family plans, we make less of a contribution. To adults, we make less of a contribution, so we pay less to those plans, and our, our interest has always been ensuring our employees and our employees' children. So we've managed to control our costs by what we contribute through the bargaining process.
But yeah, it's enormous, we face it as individuals who need health insurance, and we also face it as taxpayers.
Absolutely.
And to add to that, the retirement system, the MEEPERS retirement system.
Yes.
Yeah, Sean, I don't know if you got that far.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is yet another thing that legally we have to cover, especially in collective bargaining, when the raises come in, the retirement benefits are adjusted as well accordingly, so. I'm gonna go ahead and ask the question that has been going around, and just, you know, call out the elephant in the room, because as we talk about places we have cut, it has certainly come up several times. Why are, why is our superintendent, why are district leaders getting a similar raise as to what the teachers are getting? So I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable asking Scott and Jeff to defend their own raises. So instead, I just have a couple of, of questions. How many on the district leadership team have their PhD?
Two, right?
Uh, yes, I think we have.
Dr. Selby, we have.
We have three.
We have three.
Three, and yourself, correct?
I don't, no, I work, I've worked on mine, I do not have it finished.
Is there?
It's okay, Jeff, I don't have mine either.
I haven't finished mine yet.
Is there a pay scale, like there is for teachers, so if you have a PhD?
No. Okay, so. There is no pay scale, and there's no steps, so administrators don't get steps like teachers. So when we talk about.
For years of service.
Yeah, when we talk about the aggregate teacher increase for next year at seven point nine, just under eight percent, we are not talking about the steps that teachers will get during those three years of the contract. So administrators don't get steps, they don't get education's credits for having education, they just get a COLA increase. So that's something that's important to know, and I'm a big proponent of our teachers getting well compensated for what they do, they have very difficult jobs. But our administrators have very difficult jobs as well. And to not give them at least the COLA increase, the aggregate increase that we would give teachers, and historically, that's the way our district is operated, it is not a new thing to give our administrators the same increase that our teachers get from year to year, that, that is not. So it just happens that the last collective bargaining was higher than, than normal or typical. But that does not mean that we shouldn't keep pace with the same percentages for our administrators, considering they do not get steps. Teachers get steps, so for some teachers, in some years, it's gonna be well above the eight percent that they're getting for an increase. And again, they should get it, they should get that step during those three years, and I support teachers getting these raises. You know, teachers are not, no, no educator is well-paid for what they do. And we could defend it all day long, I'm, I know I'm, not everyone's gonna agree, that's fine. Education is a public function, it is a, it's an important function, but I, we only have thirteen administrators in our district. We have four hundred and thirty-five employees, we have another hundred temporary and seasonal employees. So if you count those in, five hundred and thirty-five folks, thirteen people that operate this district. And so, and they work year-round, so they don't just work, you know, and I'm, and teachers, honestly, I was a teacher for many years. By the time June fifteenth came around, I needed, I needed a huge break, okay? They're both hard jobs, they're different kind of jobs, but, you know, I, I support the compensation for administrators, at least matching the COLA or aggregate increase for teachers from year to year. So, and I know that's hard, you know, for people to hear that, but there's also been years where our administrators and our teachers have taken low increases in, during COVID, and that, you know, part of it is inflation, we all know what the reasons are. So I, I also want to point out, this is, you know, this is not typical either. But if you remember, in education, our school system is labor-intensive, I mean, we're not a corporation, we only, we're working with people, and so people are what we have, we don't have the big machines or anything like that, we are people. So if we wanna invest in a better education for kids, you gotta pay your people.
Can I, can I jump in with a, just a, so, I appreciate this coming up. I kind of disagree with your philosophy, so I, but I don't necessarily disagree with where you're at, but it's based off of this, we gave the teachers that percentage raise to equate to, it's like almost a market increase, to like, sit at the benchmark of what our other competitors or other local districts were, like, it's a fair, we, we tried to get them to, as like Jesse was alluding to, to what they, what are, what's standard in the market. What is that, like, what our administrators are making, would you say that that eight percent gets them to where other administrators locally are? Because if not, then, if, I mean, if that's the case. Because if not, then, if, I mean, if that's the case, then I understand that.
Not all of them.
So you're still saying they're below at that benchmark, I think that's.
We do comparisons every single year to check in with what other administrators, in fact, all of the superintendents in this area, we put in for a spreadsheet and put in what administrators are making in our area for the current year.
Yeah.
And if we have information for the next year, so, you know, we're, we're not high, we're not low. I'd say we're in, we're in the hunt for everybody.
After that, after the eight percent.
We're in the mix.
Because I think the eight percent is what scares people, but I think it's, it's like, if you, if we've been paying them low and it takes eight percent to get to the point of where they should be getting compensated, then it takes eight percent to get them to that point, and that's kind of the philosophy of like, we do have good administrators and we do have good leadership and consistency in the administration, kind of like the Finance Committee, is what will make a stronger district. But I wouldn't just give eight percent because the teachers got eight percent, like I would give it based off where the market is deserving.
No, I should have, yeah, I think that's a really important point, and when we look at that, that is, that is the case.
Okay.
That is the case, we look at the market, we look at what the teachers have made per percentage, and I can say it is, we're right in the hunt when we do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think just making sure everyone sort of understands sort of the process of how the administrative contracts work is there's, because the, the timing is not with our, our budget, right? They have to be signed or issued in February.
If approved by the board, it's, there's a statutory deadline for administrators that's earlier than teachers. And so for principals, it's March first, assistant principals, et cetera. And for those that are probationary, and then it's February first for everybody else that's continuing.
And so the administration, they, they do the other like principal contracts, and then the board had voted for me to work for, for our superintendent's contract. And I did the exact same thing that you're asking, I was like, what, eight percent? Okay, like, how does that compare? And then, yes, asked for the comparators, and we are, we are not. I was actually surprised where we were.
Couple more questions, what time did you get to work today, Jeff?
It was before eight.
And have you left?
I haven't gone home.
How many days a week is that typical?
It's usually anywhere from one to three.
So last night.
Four this week.
Oh, yeah.
Last night.
I mean, the building stuff.
But you know, we all do this because we enjoy it and we like the work, and we know we're making a difference. So I, I think every administrator will tell you the same thing, I think every teacher will tell you the same thing. You know, and it's a choice, right, it's a choice you make, and it, it's a, it's a really good profession for that reason.
And how often do you take a vacation?
Uh, when I can.
He needs more.
So do you, would you say you work pretty much the entire summer?
I work most of the summer, yeah, yeah. And a lot of the administrators, I mean, what we do for the administrators, because they need, they have to have mental health as well. And quite frankly, we have them a combination of in the office during the summer and also working at home, and then making sure they're taking vacation time, because that's the time that they can take it. The school year is extremely, extremely busy.
And over the weekends, do people answer their emails?
Oh, yes, in fact, I've probably got a few from administrators right now.
Yeah, I get responses, I will sometimes email Jeff, you know, eleven o'clock at night on a Saturday, just when I'm thinking of it, and I get a response, and I get angry at him, I'm like, do not be checking your email, it's Saturday night.
There's also mental health emergencies that we get calls on our telephones, on our cell phones over the weekends.
Uh, for students, we have this new student system, we have administrators that are all set on those things. So yes, our administrators do, I mean, they don't, there's no confinement to the work, if that's what you're asking. The job is the job, you do it, period. And we never talk about this, so, and I wouldn't have brought it up otherwise.
Well, I.
You've made him very uncomfortable.
It is, it is not a comfortable topic, because it's one thing for you to advocate for Marie, for Julie, for the principals, it's another thing to, to think about your own raise, and this is not an easy thing to address. So there are times I think we've got you in a bargain and you could probably make a lot more someplace else. Yeah, so I just wanted to get a sense of that.
Five minutes from here, so that makes a difference too, you kind of want to give back to where you came from.
Can I just add to that? And the loss to our district would be huge. You know, if we're getting you in a bargain and you left, all of that institutional knowledge leaves as well. And I don't think that that can be overstated. You don't get overtime, you're not able to flex up and earn a little more, right? I mean, you're just, you're a work machine. So I think, I appreciate, Kim, you bringing this up, because I think it's easy to look at that number and say, how, how could you ask for that much? But I think it's a whole different thing to look at the work being done, and the work being done in comparison to other admin in our state. I think it's important to bring that up, thanks.
Other questions?
I just want to add one thing. I don't remember which Finance Committee meeting we had, but there was a line item at the beginning of the budget season for some other position to help with administrators and.
Compliance officer.
Yes, yeah. And we definitely pushed that forward, but all that work that, I mean, there's a reason why all the administrators asked for it, right? I mean, you can talk to that for a second?
That was a compliance coordinator, because we have, this is a district where there is a higher level of litigation on certain, certain situations. And there's a lot of federal and state laws around investigations of Title IX or discrimination, harassment, bullying, and you have to follow those, those investigations very thoroughly. And you know, if there's any misstep at all, there's an issue, especially if there's a threat of a lawsuit or whatnot. So we have to make sure that we're following all those. So there's times when administrators, that's all they're doing for a week. They're not really leading their school, they're not involved in instructional pieces because they are tied up in an investigation that literally can take one, two, three weeks, a lot of their time, because it's very complicated and it's very serious. And, you know, they'll do, they want to do the work and do it right and make sure that they get to the end of it. So that's what that position was. Another administrative position that really we should have brought in probably a couple of years ago was another elementary assistant principal into our district. Right now, we have only two administrators for a school of seven hundred and forty students, that's the Wilson School. We now have another administrator that is a, one administrator for just under four hundred students. The state average is two fifty to an administrator. So we're, we're definitely above on our administrative staff at the elementary level because of rising enrollment, and we really haven't done anything to correct that. And when I say we haven't, I, I haven't pushed enough and advocated. And I think, you know, that's, it's an area we're going to need to look at.
Anyone else on the board? Thank you for everybody who's been here patiently listening to our conversation. I have a sign up, did anyone not get signed up that wanted to speak during public comment? Okay, so we are going to run this similarly to how I do typical public comment, with the exception of if there is questions that come up that we think we can answer after everyone's un-speaking, we'll try to address some of them. Again, please always feel free to email with additional questions as, as they do arise. So the board welcomes and recognizes the value of public comment, to ensure public comment is fair and orderly, we follow procedures, and our board policy, BEDH, and we ask that all members of the public do so as well. We ask that speakers use the designated podium when making their comments and speaking to the microphone. I will go through the list of names, a clock will be visible on the, on the screen, and you'll have a maximum of three minutes. And when the timer goes off, please try to wrap up your remarks. When you come up, just again, state your name and town of residence before beginning. As a reminder, this is not a time for discussion, although we're making an exception to answer questions at the end that we typically don't do during public comment. So we'll not comment during the time of remarks, but we may comment after. Lastly, please keep comments respectful and civil, we are neighbors here, please be kind. That includes the audience, please do not interrupt or respond to any of the speaker's comments. And please just address your comments to myself, the chair, and please do not make the matter about other individuals in our schools and communities. And any, anything on the contrary, I may stop the comment. So I will start with the list, and we have, oh, this is a different timer, look at that. I know, it's a little smaller. First on the list is David Noonan.
Good evening, I just want to say, I wrote stuff down to be succinct, so I have a daughter who is on a 504 at Greeley High School and in the GT program while in the middle school, so I understand the importance of special education. I wrote this down just from listening real briefly. As of April tenth, inflation is currently two point eight percent, and cost of living adjustments are currently at two point five percent. I wasn't able to attend the first two budget meetings as I was working my second job. It's tax season, so it got me thinking about my taxable income. That got me thinking about my real estate taxes and how they are now ten percent of my taxable income. So more than the eight percent that Shirley talked about last year at the, at the board meetings. So I looked at the town's mill rate over the last few years, and I apologize in advance as I'll be citing lots of numbers and percentages. So twenty twenty-three, twenty-one dollars and twenty cents, twenty twenty-four, twenty-two fifteen, twenty twenty-five, twenty-three twenty-five, and with the, based on the school proposal and nothing else, twenty-four dollars and eleven cents for next year. That's at least a two dollar ninety-one increase to the mill rate for those tax years of twenty-four to twenty-six. For those that may not know what a mill rate is, it's the tax, it's the rate which we pay taxes per every hundred thousand, a thousand dollars to our property is worth. So for a three hundred thousand dollar property value, this would equate to an eight hundred and seventy-three dollar increase for over three years of your taxes, for four hundred thousand, it's eleven hundred and sixty-four over those years. The impact, the school's impact on mill rate is thirty-nine cents, fifty-nine cents, seventy-five cents, and now eighty-six cents, which is down, which we appreciate. The impact on my family has been felt hard, as our taxes have increased by eight hundred and fifty-four dollars the last two years, or eleven point nine percent. With this proposal, it'll rise at a minimum of another four percent to sixteen percent increase over three years, or at least by another three hundred and seventy-five dollars, which would be about twelve hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That is more than five times the current inflation rate. This is not sustainable for my family, I'm sure it's not sustainable for most of the families that actually live in Cumberland as well. MSAD fifty-one is asking for an increase of their budget from forty, approximately forty-seven million to fifty-three million, over a twelve percent increase from twenty-four to twenty-six. And nothing I'm going to say here is personal, so I want to make that clear, as I feel the school has treated my family very well since twenty fifteen. However, the proposed increases to salary are very out of line with most of the professions, which actually average between three and four percent annually. So, I mean, we went through the numbers here, what's not shown here is the, over two years, the percentage, so instead of nine point six, it's really eighteen percent over two years for total regular instruction. Honestly, going down the whole list is, is, you know, not necessarily fruitful, people can do their own math. What I would propose to remedy this and the taxpayers' concerns are an annual cap of three to four percent increase to all salaries, not the seven to nine percent that's proposed. Can I have another, like, forty-five seconds?
Is there a question in there that you have for us?
There's not, there wouldn't be a question, no.
You're welcome to submit your comments, so if you can wrap them up, that would be great.
All right, yeah, I just have, I'll summarize just by saying that for not the seven, until we, my whole point of this, proposing this three to four percent increase cap on salaries over the next couple of years, is until we truly know the impact on our taxes for the new school in Turfield project. I think that's fair and in line with the average wage increase for the state of Maine. And I did talk about, to your point, the budgeting between how SADs can't, and the town council basically don't talk, or our two independent governors, and to compare us to Falmouth and Yarmouth isn't necessarily fair because of the fact that their town council oversees that as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Bill Young.
Howdy. Good evening, Bill Young, Hedgero Drive, local dissident, just given that moniker last week. I'm here to speak to you about giving our seniors in this community a tax break with regards to the ever-increasing cumulative school budget. Most of the seniors in our community have put their kids through the system, have been supportive of the SAD for years. Personally, I have been paying taxes in this community for forty-three years. It is time to give our oldest citizens the understanding that these yearly school budget increases are becoming unsustainable for them. The town of Cumberland understands this and offers seniors a tax relief program because they realize that bringing more residents here also causes more liability. North Yarmouth offers a program, but I have to say, it's impractical and awkward to use. We also feel the seniors should not have to foot their part of the bill for the turf field. The SAD never sought outside sponsors that would have lowered the cost, possibly all of it. The referendum only passed by a few votes, and we feel the turf field would not have passed had it not been attached to the new school proposal. We also understand that the true meaning of community means, and we think this means it's to all the people in this community, that this generation of residents, most living on fixed incomes, should not be taxed at the point of worrying about staying in their home. They've paid their dues, time to give them a break, please consider having a serious conversation about this issue. We also would like to thank the Finance Committee for allowing the taxpayer group to attend the meetings and allowed to ask questions. One more thing, I would hope that when TRICOM meets, that all three parties have a very serious talk as a community of going forward, trying to slow future tax increases. We realize that development has not aided your ability to hold the line, it is, it is a three-pronged issue. I have spoken with both town leadership about this very subject also. Lastly, speaking with Megan Lickler recently, I was told there was no budget at all for advanced trauma supplies, and in light of seeing tonight's savings, I'm in hopes she would consider seeding the project with some funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Michael Sweet.
Michael Sweet, North Yarmouth. First of all, I want to thank the board, and particularly the Finance Committee, for their work on this project, this budget. You shouldn't feel ungrateful, because I think the taxpayers are grateful for the work that you've done, and I think even seeing what we saw tonight was a movement in the right direction, and certainly appreciate that. But I can still see and hear the same kind of hesitancy on the part of the board members that we in the community feel. These are tough times, this is absolutely unsustainable, year over year over year, in a cumulative effect. My background is in running businesses three times the size of this district, and understanding budgets and how to address them and approach them. Some of the things you talked about tonight are right in line with what I think needs to be done. I think we need to roll the entire school budget back to zero and start rebuilding it with what's required. We heard the reference to the, the new state law to pay for some of these programs, we've heard for Leave Act, we've heard other comments about how we have to pay for health insurance, we need to roll the whole school budget back. I think over time, there's a tendency, propensity, or likelihood that the school budget has grown, we've offered more programs than we're required to offer, both on the regular programming as well as special education. Hence, we become this magnet for people. But we also have people who want to stay here, it's not just to support the people who want to move to this community with children. I remember my mother saying one day, I'm on a fixed income, and I'm like, would you please be quiet? We're all on fixed incomes, and, and most of us are. But I think what's happened here over the last couple of years, I'm new to the community, I think the board has lost credibility with the community. You've heard some of them mention tonight, the turf field, the inability to move the community to accept a building on Route one fifteen, the Gray Road, which is up the street from me. Yeah, the turf field, it's a want, not a need, and you're going to hear it over and over again, without seeking any outside funding, just today on social media, it got brought up again. So I'm going to, I'm going to continue to move along and wrap up. You know what those things are, and you know the things we're going to be facing in the future. We have rusting buses, why? I don't know, lack of deferred maintenance. We have other areas where we have legal fee increases. I think there's some things in the legislature regarding municipal bonds that could have a negative impact on our budget. And I appreciate the ability to reduce this to the ridiculous, to how many pennies this is for our, for our mill rate, but the growth of the budget for the school continues to be unattainable. I would also point out that many people have come to our, our group. I would also point out that many people have come to our, our group, I'm a member of the taxpayer association, and expressed interest in seeing some of the waste in the school department abated. And I think possibly some of the members of this finance community have heard them as well. And so I'd like, I'd like those to be addressed. But I think the, the most important thing is to roll our budgets back to zero, absolutely to zero, and start rebuilding them. That's what you do in business and I appreciate this is all about people, but a lot of businesses are about people as well. And find out what we absolutely have to provide by Fed, state, or some other regulatory body, and then rebuild the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. David McGoughlin.
Thank you. I want to echo what Mike said about the board. I've said it before, when I met with you three years ago, you're all volunteers. You put a lot of time in. I've seen that particularly recently with Kim attending our meeting, taking notes and listening carefully. So I want to preface that. Mike made a comment that, and build it too, that this is not sustainable. It's not sustainable. First of all, I take this sheet here at 7.12. It's not 7.12, it's 9.2 in my mind. Let me tell you why. You're putting the debt service in there, which includes the principal. Yeah, it's an expenditure, but it's not an expense. So if you look at the actual operations, the true operations, you're increasing 9.2. That's from 8% the prior year, I think 8.1. Inflation's running 2.4 in Colias, so you're talking 383% of inflation. That's not sustainable. It's not sustainable today. We called for strategic planning three years ago and it's not been done. I'm talking to towns on the strategic plan, by the way, because I think they need to be part of it. You know, part of it is, you gotta, you gotta stop the flow. And there's no development policy in this community. Leanne, you made a comment about we need, you said, "We need to diversify?" Yes, I mean, you and I talked about that, our revenue stream. The problem is, we can't. I'm a community banker. You're not going to recruit businesses. If you want to recruit a business and put Tyler Technology down on Route 1, the only opportunity you get for development, you're going to have to give up 10 years of taxes to get them there to create the jobs. You're not going to get businesses in here. You may get a takeout Chinese place in North Yarmouth, but that's the limitation of it. Point being is, I don't think the revenues are going to do it. You want to focus on development, you better focus on the 55 and tell the two communities to stop the development because it's increasing the tax burden. You can't bear that anymore. I looked at Cape Elizabeth a little bit. We're running 9.2% on operations. They were 2.5. Falmouth is 4%. Sarah, you made a great comment. If I charged 8%, I'd be out of business. You're charging the taxpayers 9.2% when the people in the audience are making 2.4%. That's a hard pill to swallow for them because they're at their limitations now. That's a challenge. I'm not critiquing the board. I'm just saying it's a challenge you face, a lot of other towns in our, in our state face. It's a common challenge, but the reality of it is, the bottom line on it is, we can't, you can't sustain 9%. Mike was right. I'd like to see a 3% across the board reduction in costs. I took a look at the maintenance and facility department. If I compare them to other peers, it looks to me like we're running 2 to 3 million more in operations on similar size. I don't think that is completely, but that number is so big, it makes me want to look at the budget very carefully and go through it. On the peer analysis, thank you for the peer analysis. I'm going to take a much deeper look at that. I saw it a while back and I thought we were much higher up on the scale of costs than what I saw. If that's, if, I would strongly suggest you push that peer analysis. If in fact that lines up, that we really compare favorably to our peer, the community needs to hear that. If not, then we need to line up to our peers.
Yeah. You, you didn't get the loud buzzer.
Pardon me?
I know. There was no buzzer, but you wrapped up perfectly.
I did lean over and I saw.
I was like bracing for it, but.
And I'm with the tax group. Kim, you came over. There's a lot of talent on this group and they're more than happy to step up and help out on any of these things. Many of us have experience in dealing with major cost cutting. I've dealt with it a lot over the years and how to affect it and so on, so. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Shirley.
Before you start the timer, our minds can absorb what our butts can endure. So do we need a brain break? If I were in the classroom, I would still be doing this like every 20 minutes. I would have to close your eyes, do this, touch your nose, your eyes closed to reengage your brain. Do you need that?
Maybe, yeah. Maybe a bathroom break after this.
Long night. First of all, thank you. Thank you for coming forward with the numbers. Some of what I'm going to say now is a little bit irrelevant because I wrote this yesterday without the numbers today. So thank you for getting it down a little bit more. I stand before you tonight with three requests. First, I ask you to change how you build your school budget. Yes, this is something you have within your power. You should not be building a new budget simply by starting with last year's adopted version. That approach lacks a solid foundation. There was a time not so long ago when school board members sat down with principals and department heads to have them justify their budgets. While they weren't asked to speak to salaries, they did discuss staffing levels, student needs, curriculum, and professional development. That process helped the board truly understand the district's priorities. You are the fiduciaries, all of you, not just the finance committee, of the people's money. You should know where it goes. Building next year's budget based on last year's without knowing how this year's money is being spent is like asking an investor to buy more stock in your company without showing any financial data. And yet the district continues to ask for more, nearly $11 million in increases over the last three years. And you keep saying yes. At some point, you need to say, "The people can't afford that. Bring it back with a 3.5% increase." You are the board of directors. Please direct. My second request is that you sharpen your pencils. In fiscal year 23, there was a positive difference of over $866,000 between the proposed and actual budgets. In fiscal year 24, the difference was over $760,000. That's more than $1.6 million in two years, spent differently than what the voters approved. Where did that money go? I think we heard the answers to some of that in the superintendent's presentation, but still, it's not what the voters approved. Which brings me to my third request. Get a handle on your fund balances and all the spending and revenue outside of the 11 mandated cost centers. I can't tell you what your fund balance was at the start of fiscal year 25, but I do know that at the beginning of fiscal year 23, it was over $9.2 million. At the start of fiscal year 24, it had dropped to $8.7 million. This is from page 16 of the fiscal year 23 audit report I sent you earlier today. Do you know what your fund balance is now? Where is the accountability for that money? How does the public know and have a say in how those millions are being spent? I've shared many of my concerns with you already. For example, your substitute budget.
Oh, no. And Shirley, I really appreciate your emails. And I know we got one, as you referenced earlier today. And so, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it. Terry. Terry Maloney, can he share that? Okay. Mike Mallory.
Mike Mallory, North Yarmouth. A whole bunch of numbers here. Numbers like this give me a headache. I'm a retired fireman. I would, I did a small business fixing people's houses. Accounting for me was, I make a dollar. I try not to spend more than 99 cents. And that was it. I got a number for you, though. 261. You had a, a slide up here that showed the increases from 2015 on. 261 is the percentage that my tax bill has gone up since 2010, when I bought the house that we're living in right now. Judy and I bought that house. 261% equates to like 17% increase per year on average. Now, if you take into the fact that, that it considered that 80% of that tax bill comes from the school department and not, and the rest comes from the town, that's still 208%. And I'm going to say the U-word again. It's unsustainable. You guys were talking about how costs are going up. Costs are going up for me too. And I just want to have you guys, as they, as they were saying, think about all this stuff when you go. And I get that you're advocating for the school department, but if the people can't pay the bill, you won't have any money. And so the rest of my time, I'd like to yield to anybody that didn't get to finish what they were saying if they want.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. So that's everyone I had on the sign up. Okay. So I am going to close. Why do I keep forgetting the name of this? The public hearing? Sorry. Jeez. Maybe we do need that brain break. I did want to give an opportunity, if there were some specific questions that we feel that can be answered based on what our community members shared. The one thing that I know that I've looked at, and I, I think at some point we've had a slide, it is really challenging when we're doing community, to community comparisons because what we have that a lot of those communities don't have is increased enrollment. And so when we're just looking pure, like percentage increases year over year, yeah, they, they look high. It is higher than inflation. And some of that is due to the fact that we have more children too. And a lot of the other districts aren't facing those enrollment increases in the same way. And I, I thought we had a slide at some point that sort of compared enrollment numbers over time with budgets over time.
We do, we do have a graph that's not in this presentation that we can share out and put on our, on the page.
Because I often forget that when I look down, I was like, geez, like, look at these percentages. And yes, how are we competitors? But I think one difference that we do have in our community, it's not just that we're doing the same thing year over year. It's that we've had, we have more students that we're serving as well, which has, what has increased the budget.
Right. And I, and I think to, to further piggyback on that, so we have obviously two sides of the budget. We have the expenditures, we have the revenues, and the state recognizes that when your enrollment is going up every year, that you, there should be an offset. And that's why, that is a major factor that goes into the state subsidy. And that's why we've continued to get state subsidy to offset, offset the tax side of the budget. So even though our expenditures are going up, and a lot of it is because of enrollment increases over the last 10 years, the state recognizes that as a, an immediate thing that needs to be rectified on their end. And so the state EPS formula does take that into account. So I, I think that's a really good point. Even though our expenditure side's gone up, our revenue side from the state has also increased remarkably, I think, over the last several years. I mean, we've got 1.2 million this year. It was 1 million last year. I think it was a million before that, or close to a million. The state recognizes that when you have more students, you need more money to support those students from outside. So even though expenditures do look higher, and they are because of that, we're also getting that increased revenue to help on the tax side of things.
So I was taking notes and as finance chair, I'm going to go ahead and address and answer some of the questions that came up because they were really good ones. So Michael and Shirley, you both brought up the zero-based budget, which I think is really important. And I, I did that where I took every salary benefit, you know, what we were talking about before, that legally we have to have our debt service. And I created a column that was fixed costs. We, we cannot adjust that. We are committed to those. Now, you could argue that we could cut staff positions, but that's the last thing we want to do is a reduction in force. So I took every salary as it was. On top of that was costs that we can't get around, but maybe we don't know the exact amount. So energy costs, how much in special ed, because you don't always know exactly who's going to come through the door and what their needs are going to be. That in, they're rough numbers and I haven't updated them yet.
And your computer's about to fall asleep.
And my computer's about to fall asleep because it's really old, because I can't afford a new laptop. That came to 90, just about 95% of our budget was things that we, you know, you have to put in. And maybe you don't know the exact number, but you have to put it in. So it was that last 5% that we were really focused on in our finance meetings. I also want to address, as David mentioned, there is a lot of talent in, in that, the group, the taxpayer group. And in fact, one of you, I won't say who, brought up a really good point that I then was able to bring back to Scott, and that was how we ended up being able to reduce the maintenance services budget by 10,000. And so we are listening to you and you, you do have very valid points. Shirley, I am very committed to being able to have more quarterly reports, being able to look at, you know, year, year-to-date, where, where are we at this quarter compared to previous quarters? And I'm really looking forward to the accounting program, being able to do that. And I'm hoping that I get reelected so that I can do that. Just going to throw that out there. The maintenance on the vehicles was a great question that was brought up and I brought that to Scott. And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what your answer was is that Maine State Police use us as an example for other districts on how to maintain our vehicles.
That's correct. When we have a state inspection on our vehicles, rarely do we ever get a vehicle taken off the road, unlike other districts even close to us that have them removed from the road. And you could pick up the phone and call the state police inspection and you'd, you'd get an answer on that. So we'll look at that.
And so keeping that van out of the budget was uncomfortable. So I appreciate that, you know, given our high standards for maintenance, that Scott and Phil, correct?
Yeah, it's Phil.
Were able to, to say, "Okay, we can, you could use some duct tape and keep it on the road for another year." Not literally, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, it was literally what it was, was the running boards on the side of the van. And the real issue is the wheelchair lift that's on the van not working properly. And we've tried to make changes to that and fix it, but you know, we'll see what happens in the course of the year. So.
We're hoping. And, and that is sort of a kicking the can down the road because at some point we will need another van. But I was grateful that we were able to not have to do that right now. And hopefully, there will be another lease purchase opportunity or something coming up. As far as waste, there were some interesting things that were brought up. The rest of the board doesn't necessarily know this. But I hate to say it, I think that they were misunderstandings, overwhelmingly misunderstandings. For example, there was a question of toilet paper being thrown out. And what in fact happened is that the maintenance department was not able to use them because they were the wrong size. Rather than throw them away, brought them down to the transportation department, but left them near the dumpster. They were not throwing them away and bus drivers have been taking them. They've been putting them on the buses and using them as paper towels or, you know, when it to clean up buses. So those rules are getting used. And I appreciate that when somebody sees something, they say something because that's important to ask.
Kim, it was also that there was a delivery to the middle school of paper towel. We could not get it up to the door by the side, so it was set near the dumpster and it was being brought into the building. And it was being delivered, so there was a perception that that was somehow going in the dumpster caper, I guess, that we were throwing out.
Instead of the paper caper, yeah. So those are the types of things we want to hear. Because if someone sees something, there, I am confident that there is a reasonable explanation to that. But if there wasn't, and if Scott said, "Wait a second, what just happened?" I believe, I believe in my gut, as a taxpayer beholden to this man's numbers, that he would call that out and fix it. I genuinely. Um, I genuinely believe that. So as a taxpayer who has to go home tonight to an even more grumpy taxpayer, I trust that Scott is, is on top of these things. So I just wanna communicate that to, to you, that, that I took those concerns. Um, and the last thing is Shirley, you brought up the idea of, you know, the overages, um, and, uh, you know, some quick calculations, it's around one and a half percent of the budget, which, when you consider that we are putting together this budget months before the year is over, and trying to look ahead and anticipate what costs are gonna be coming up, and Scott does that year after year after year, to come in under two percent is pretty impressive. Um, and that fund balance, overage, whatever you wanna call it, we have been very prudent with that, and to bring up, you know, to what you asked earlier, it will go back to the taxpayers in the sense that we've been saving it towards this new school. So, um, every question that has been brought up has been valid and important, and I share the same kinds of struggles with you, again, at, we are all taxpayers here, uh, for this district with the exception of Scott and Jeff, but I have never once, and I, please know that I say this from the heart, I have never once felt that Scott or Jeff is advocating for an overage because they don't have to pay for it. I genuinely do believe that they are looking out for all of us. So, yeah, we've got some real problems in this town, and we wanna continue hearing about things that otherwise we might not know about, and I believe, even if I don't get re-elected, I believe that Sarah and Sean, um, are, you all would be in very good hands with Sarah and Sean coming back next year, and I think they have a sense of maybe some areas that as a finance committee, we could dig a little deeper. Um, and we found that out when we were forced to come up with two hundred thousand dollars. We realized, okay, there are some places, um, and maybe that was a good thing, that insurance came back high because it forced us to say, okay, we really gotta do this. Um, and there's more that we can do. However, this budget, I can tell you, again, looking you all in the eye, this is the, the absolute best that we can absolutely do. And, and I, I, I don't feel great about it, cause I never feel great about the budget, but I feel good that this budget is solid, and we have not put anything in it that doesn't belong. So, there you go.
Was there other questions that came up that we thought we can answer?
I think the facilities one, I could speak to a little bit, um, in comparison to some of the surrounding areas. I mentioned this at a previous meeting. In our facilities budget, there's things that are contained, like the leases on the modulars that we have, that are not in our surrounding communities, that's like seven hundred thousand dollars in leases on modulars. The other thing is, is that we have school revolving renovation fund bonds in which we saved fifty percent, you know, it was free money, fifty percent of it. We're paying for fifty percent of it in low-interest money for basically renovations to our facilities. So that's carried in the facilities budget. Then when you take the energy projects that we've done, and you add those in, which are also in the facilities budget, I can get to that two million dollar number fairly quick, um, that people are talking about. So just with those additional items that appear in our facilities budget that don't appear in our surrounding neighbors', um, uh, budgets, so. Those items can't be put in debt service, they have to be put in facilities by the state's eleven-cost center format.
Thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to address something that got mentioned, uh, the per pupil cost, and I think it's really important, based on enrollment, to take a look at that. And I, I appreciate that you brought that up and you were gonna dig into that further. Um, one of the, uh, cost exercises I did was take our per pupil cost based on what's in the district's data, uh, information that we have that's posted on the website, and then just ran over to a CPI inflation calculator and typed in everything, and I based it on twenty twenty-four, cause that's the data we have, and then went back to twenty fifteen, that's the data we have. And the highest year inflation-adjusted cost, didn't include this year's proposed budget, mind you, was twenty nineteen. And it's flatlined or gone down and kinda curved up a little bit since then. From twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, you saw a significant increase per pupil cost, but since then, it's, it's been a steady line. I don't like to hear it, cause I want it to go down, but that's what I'm seeing.
That the per people has been consistent, right, which accounts for the enrollment, yeah.
Cause you mean from, if you put a dollar in, yeah. You, you put a dollar in and what it's worth, you know, it, twenty-four percent increase over five years, from March twenty twenty to March twenty twenty-five today, you put a dollar in twenty twenty, it's worth less, right? So it's a, it's a huge jump.
And can I say one thing?
Sure.
Okay, so the public comment, and I think what we have said too, is really emblematic of the fact that I think two things can be true at once, that like, we've worked really hard, the finance team has worked really hard to cut the budget down to something that is usable and responsible. At the same time, this is not sustainable, and like, we need to find another way. Like, we can't keep doing it the same way, because our environment has changed. And so, like, what's in our, like, there's a lot of stuff that's not in our control, like, uh, as a board, it's not. And so, we can focus on those and deflect on those, and those are reasonable things for context. But what I heard from some of the responses are, it wasn't even necessarily specific to this year's budget, it was like a different way to operate around it, and like, giving us ourselves, giving ourselves a little bit longer of a runway in the, like, now, like you said, now, we should start right now for, for next year, um, and, and work with the program teams who are like, thinking about how they will adjust their programs and what impact that has on budget and all that. And so, I would say like, the finance team, I think, didn't really start, typically the kid into the finance team doesn't start meeting all that frequently until like, November, is that right? Like, January, this year was a little bit later, right? Cause we had transitions with, like, leadership, but like, I think it's late. Like, I, I, I think that that finance team, given the times that we're at, we cannot continue to do that. Also, from personal responsibility, I attended zero finance meetings this year. And so, I've been in touch with finance, and I've been in, you know, but like, I could go and see all the numbers in great detail at any point. So it is available to the whole board, and to like, the, you are the board of directors, and we have these opportunities to review it. I think that, like, I call on all of us to be much more engaged in the normal subcommittee meetings than we probably have been. And so, I'll start with myself on that, but we can't, we can't continue to like, I think we've done a great job with this budget, but could we have done better if we had done a little bit different strategies? I don't know. So, um, I just appreciate that fact of, it's not even just a, a pick at this, it's more of just process, and I do agree that, that I think the, the two communities and the tax fund, taxpayers' group has been hugely vital and like, a check and balance. So I just appreciate that, and I think we should do it differently. I think we need to really approach this differently, and I think everyone here probably agrees.
Yeah, and I think the continuity piece is gonna be important, so, um. We, I mean, there was a lot of turnover in COVID, right? Like, the board is new, and I've been just so impressed at the work that everyone has, has put in, and to have continuity for finance for next year is gonna be an, an extra asset, um, for us, um, as a district. Um, so if, if you really like, uh, Thursday nights, uh, at the Geiger Room, um, we have a full slate, uh, ahead of, so May eighth, actually, I lie, May eighth is not in this room. If you come here and it's empty, go to the GCA, um, and if we, if we pass this tonight, um, then the, well, I think we have to have that meeting on the, the, by law anyway, um, is the, the district budget meeting. But then, on the next Thursday, we have the joint meeting with the three towns, where we're really going to have more of those longer-term conversations, and I'm really interested to hear what their, you know, what their plans, um, what they're looking out ahead at, and how that impacts our district, so. May fifteenth, and I do think, is that in the Geiger Room? Oh, Cumberland Town Hall, look at that, Cumberland Town Hall. Okay, so, um, I will ask the board, do we, oh, Katie.
Um, for reference, first budget, do I vote? No, right?
On the, on the budget motion?
You can vote on any, yes, you can vote on the budget.
Okay.
Yes. The only thing you don't vote on is personnel, uh, or anything, you don't go to executive session.
Okay, sounds good.
Or personnel appointments, and everything else.
Thank you. Does the board need a stretch or bathroom break?
Can I just ask one, one quick, uh, question? If this doesn't pass tonight, what happens next?
Um, at this point, you would still have to be within the ten days that Scott was talking about, so that means the finance committee or the board.
Seven days before the district budget meeting, which would be the eighth, so they would have to meet and get the, and get another budget adopted.
The week.
Prior to May first.
Right, so that week, that last week of the.
May first is a drop deadline for getting everything posted in the community for the May eighth meeting, so.
So there, I would recommend that either the full board at that point, or the finance committee acting on behalf of the board, and then the full board, um, look at, you know, what other adjustments need to be made to the budget prior to that.
Got it, thanks. Wondering sort of like procedurally.
Yeah, it would be extraordinarily tight to do that.
Sure.
Okay, are we?
Can I put in one other plug? So there wasn't a question, but I heard a lot of people say, this is not sustainable, we can't do this, yada, yada. Um, and I think there's a perception that the board is just like throwing money at Jeff. Um, but the reality is that more kids are coming because we've got a good school, and that makes our taxes go up, right? So like, there are more people moving here, and so, for Cumberland, we have a comprehensive plan that we're doing this year, and so, it's gonna dictate the next ten years of potential growth in the town. So if you live in Cumberland, please be engaged in our comprehensive plan, because maybe zoning needs to change, yada, 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 right? Like, if you care about seniors, advocate for seniors in the comprehensive plan, cause our job here is to fund the school and students. And there's more students, and that falls on all of us to pay for them, right? And it sucks, but, so, we're doing what we can, we're trying to save money. I keep pitching that we need to use the co-op to save money, like, save ten grand on a bobcat. You know, like, we're doing what we can. I'm like, we're doing what we can, but we gotta pay for these students, and it falls on all of us, and that sucks. So please be involved with the town council, please be involved in the comprehensive plan, cause we can only do what we can do, and you gotta take the other avenues to try and make change. And so, there's a ten-year plan, so please fill out the survey when it comes, only thirty percent of people do. Please show up to meetings, please advocate, okay? Thank you.
Yes, and controlling healthcare costs is another important one. All right, any, any other, okay, all right.
All right, so then, I move to call and approve the warrants for the budget meeting and the budget validation referendum, and to authorize the notice of amounts adopted to be approved in, be approved in for presented to this meeting, and that a copy of said vote be included with the minutes of this meeting. Is that the correct motion?
Good name.
Or do I have to read the whole thing?
Close enough, as presented.
As presented, that, Kim was reading it as, okay, so Kim made a motion, um, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, any other conversation or questions before we move to vote? Okay, all in favor? Okay, okay.
I know, we're in this really straight line tonight.
I know, it's very.
Okay, all opposed? This is me. We, we are in, I know, we need to get this a little more angled, cause it is hard to see, okay. So.
So we have a number of documents that have to be signed, a lot.
Now we have some work, okay, so motion passes.
Can I make a comment? What, is that boss? Um, I think it's just really crucially important for people to speak up and to show up, and I wanna say thank you to the many, many members of the audience from North Yarmouth. Good showing, guys, um, and also from Cumberland. I really appreciate you guys being here and speaking. It's excellent information that is crucial for us to hear, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so can I get a motion to award the contract to complete the earthwork for the artificial turf on the Greeley campus to RJ Grandin and Sons, which submitted the lowest bid in a competitive bid process, and to authorize the superintendent to negotiate and sign said contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Megan. Great, so, um, I will review kind of where we are to date. So this is the second part of a two-part bid process for the turf field. The first was the, the surface itself, our really, our PFAS, free, no infill, um, solution that we voted on last month or the month before, um, which has been ordered. And then to follow that was earthwork that needed to be completed, the process that was used for that. There was a qualification process where there was three bidders who were qualified, all three submitted a bid. The lowest bid was RJ Grandin and Sons. Um, we did take a look, the initial bid, um, came in a bit higher than we were initially anticipating. Um, and some of the reasons it came in higher were, um, additional things, because of the location that the field is in, there's some other work that was planned in that area as part of the project, um, that involved the, the moving of earth in this earthwork project. So there was a few additional things, um, that were included as part of that bid beyond just the surfacing of the turf field. One of the other things, um, that had come up while we were looking at our field space um, for this project was, there was a higher level of arsenic, um, that, than we expected that we have to, we had to create a plan for, um, that needed to be included in the art, earthwork project that needs to be moved and made safe, um, on our campus. And so, there was a couple things that weren't initially accounted for. Um, if you recall, our budget for the, the project had a line, um, for the, the turf field project, that was two point five million, um, that we're supposed to cover the two parts of the project. Uh, the turf itself came in lower than the, what we had budgeted for that part of the, uh, artificial turf project. The earthwork came in a bit higher, because it was things beyond just the work related to the field. We did take a look at what was included in, in the bid, um, and we were able to look at some lights that were initially included in that project, that part of the project that we didn't need at that time, or didn't need to be included in the earthwork. Um, and so, that brought our bid down, and just conversations with the, the lowest bidder just on some of the assumptions, so that brought the bid down to one point eight million. Um, and so, the two, adding the one point eight million, um, plus the cost of the turf, uh, which is around eight hundred thousand, um, puts the full project, so that, that one line, um, again, on the bid, the budget was two point five million, it brings it in at two point five. And why can't I, I have one email, you have it here. Thank you, um, now I can do the exact numbers, okay. So it brought it to, um, oh, you don't have that number, where's the other number?
Are you looking for the total?
The total.
So.
Yes, you have it written down?
No, but I'll.
So the contract that we're approving.
The contract you're approving, I can give you the total number.
Yes, is one point eight million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Yes.
And then this was stuff that was moved around.
Okay, okay, and so, we did move, so the, of the one point eight million, two hundred and twelve thousand was for sidewalks, utilities, walls.
And stuff that, yeah, that was not originally in the budget.
That wasn't originally in the budget.
That was then added to this contract, um, that really was in another area of the budget.
Right, so up until, so we got this bid in last week, we've had conversations with our architects, um, with the lowest bidder, um, to make sure we understood all the assumptions, and so, we were able to get the earthwork to one point eight million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-four. which includes work beyond the turf field that is part of the rest of the project. But it still gets the line of the budget that we originally planned for, for the artificial turf, to that 2.5 million. So that is the earthwork contract that we have on tonight's agenda. And we're asking for a vote so we can get that part of the projects. Did I hit all the points?
Yeah, I think the only, yes, you did. So because when I, we, when Leanne and I first saw that above budget, we were kind of alarmed. But I think understanding why we moved some of the things that were part of the other project into the, the field, the turf.
Earthworks.
Earthworks side of it made sense. The other thing about this one, so there are two things. The other thing about this one is like the drainage and the work that's going into it is, is, should probably, we should consider being completely separate from like the turf surface itself. In the sense that like our playing field needed drainage. The arsenic is an issue, as, as Leanne said. And I think it just makes for a much safer playing surface regardless of what's over it. The other thing is, and I think it's more in context of what is going to be presented a little bit later, is the impact of the economy and tariffs and other estimates that we've gotten have led to like, I think, eating into some of our bid contingencies already. And so the 1.8 that we have right now towards this, like approving it now, we, like, we've already proved the turf, like that's gone. That approving this now, I think, eats up that 1.8. So we don't have it later on in another bid process. So I think there's an aspect of this, of, of the, of this vote that's kind of putting towards the timing of which that we do it. Because if we don't vote yes tonight, then we probably aren't going to be able to do the, put in the field in time for some of the fall sports. And I think that's something to consider. And then the other thing is that like, until, I mean, we could wait because we're getting close on some of the budget situation, like some of the, I'm tired. Since we're getting close, I think that we haven't gotten the full bids yet or we haven't sent out a bid for the new project. Like it's, this is one way for us to control for some of the unknowns that we're going to get in that bid return for tariffs and stuff like that. Now I will say that we've attacked that and we have put in a bunch of contingencies and I feel much more comfortable than I did, and we can get to that a little bit later. But like, that is a thing, like if we spend this now, it's, or if we say yes now, it's, we're going forward with the project, but we've lost one avenue for us to protect ourselves against the unknowns. That's the only other thing I'd.
But we weren't drawing out of the big contingencies for, to move this forward. I think that was something that was important to us for this project at this time, is that we weren't touching the big contingencies for the turf project that we had budgeted for.
Nope.
Yeah, and this, this conversation's fresh because all of, we had our meeting last night with the building committee. And there's just work every single moment going on to get us ready to put the full bid in next month, including, they're looking, they're actually drilling into the roof at M I W just to make sure all of our specs.
Hopefully they don't put another hole.
Yeah, not another hole, just to make sure that we understand the conditions so that our estimates can be as close and conservative as, as possible to make sure that we can keep this project on track, so.
And I should add, the building committee, after a lot of debate and discussion, all felt comfortable with where we are projected to be and for moving forward with this. They all recommended to do that. We didn't have anybody like push against, but I just, it, you know, it's a thing on the table that we should have to consider, the whole context of the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, now I would just add one quick thing is that the building committee also looked at a, a number of items for reduction to the overall project at this time, with the idea that some of them might be add alternates later instead of part of the base bid. And so those items were already taken up by the building committee and factored into that because of those, if you call them tariff guard or inflation guards that were built into the, the school project as recently as within the last week, to make sure that this is a really protected budget in case of economic circumstances. There's like, a lot of financial protections in this, which is good. And so some of these are pulled out in order to make sure that that happened.
Any other questions?
I have two overall questions.
Sure.
Not specific, not specific. Is there a barrier to sponsorship?
For the.
Like for the turf field? But a couple of people mentioned it.
Oh, yeah. So there's been a lot of conversations around what other things that we could be fundraised for.
Yeah.
And there is potential for sponsorship. I know we have a policy related to that.
There is definitely sponsorship opportunities, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but we have not, to be clear for the record, we have not been approached by anybody to have this field sponsored. And in fact, I think there were some swings and some misses in previous years to do that. But the rumor that was referred to today and has been on Facebook is, I don't know where that came from, but it is false. Like obviously we would have take, we would have loved to have done
Right.
what Cape Elizabeth did.
Right.
But Hanaford already has their Cape Elizabeth field. So we, we have not, that has not, that has not occurred. I can guarantee you that. From my standpoint and from what we've discussed, we've had a lot of pushback on that. That is just not.
Yeah, we have not turned down any.
No.
No, I mean, I do question, like, I think we could fundraise a lot like harder and be like, and we can do that even during this period at that point.
Oh, yes.
There are opportunities, so we're always doing that for, it's not, this is not.
Yes, there's not bells and whistles and flashy lights that were adding to this project. It's a field that kids can play on safely. That was the priority and other things that are nice, which includes a scoreboard that people can see, that's going to be separate.
Yep, not on.
Yes.
Can you go back to the, what's happening with the drainage? Because it sounds like that is, I just want to hear you say it again to make sure I got it right.
Yeah.
There, there's work that would have needed to be done regardless and this will be beneficial
Yep.
to have this worked out.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like, I am a very open proponent, like, I was not for keeping it all in one package. So like, I'm not like this turf apologist, I've never been that. But I will say like, the, the playing surface that we have and when we've looked at drainage drawings and he's, we have this incredible person on the design team that has all the historical records of where our drainage goes to make sure it doesn't hit into your neighborhoods, shows where our runoff water comes to and why our field is as unplayable as it's been. And there are like, I, you know, we can question the timing of when we do it within this project, but regardless, it's a safety issue in terms of the, how the field gets ripped up. It costs us a lot of money to make sure that it is maintained and taken care of appropriately with all the water that comes down. So we would have had to do the drainage at some point with some money, someplace, to make sure that, that field was playable. And that's independent of the surface that we put on it.
Well, and the cost, I mean, a lot of this is the discovery of like high levels of arsenic.
Arsenic, yeah. I mean, that's, that's definitely part of it too. So, yeah, I mean, that's again, that's why partly I think it should be separated from the surf, the playing surface that we put on there. Because that, I think, brings down the whole project in itself. But the majority of the cost of the project is actually just improving the surface of that they, and not even just the surface, like the grounds of where they play and where we require them to play.
Yep, sidewalks, utilities, arsenic removal, yep.
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 So more than half of that 3 million is going.
Yeah, I mean, 800,000's on the turf and 1.8 is on, is on the actual.
Yeah, the actual turf came in under budget, like 20% under.
Yep.
And that will benefit neighbors by?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's elements of the drainage that would, like, how that connects into the rest of the flow. Yes, will benefit neighbors in that. But I think the biggest, the biggest benefit honestly, I think, is just the usability of that field and the safety of our players. I mean, like on, like, yeah.
Yeah, for a safety from like being able to stay on campus to, yeah, the, the surface itself, yes. Yep. Are there other questions? Okay. All in favor?
How did you address this, is this still a public meeting, right?
Not this portion.
Really?
Well, you can stay. It's not executive session. No. Sorry, we'll finish our vote. All in favor? Great. All opposed?
I'm trying to look.
Our meetings have the public comment times, otherwise. No, no. No. Yeah, it's a different format. I know it is different. We come from council, it is a different setting. Okay, where are we?
Teacher contracts.
Teacher contracts? Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve continuing teacher contracts for 2025, 2026 as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I would love to second that.
Oh, Megan's, Megan's got a second. All right.
Okay, in your packet, there are 21 teachers that we are recommending for continuing contract. That means that they are going from year two to year three. And so they are no longer going to be probationary at the beginning of the 2025, 26 school year. Been recommended by administrators. I also visit the classroom of each of these teachers twice, a minimum of twice, along with other administrators, but obviously their principals and assistant principals do the supervision and evaluation. So we're very pleased to recommend these 21 teachers to the board for a vote tonight.
Great. Is this number pretty typical?
This number, this one is actually a little higher than normal. It was post-COVID, I think, was when we voted for some of these positions. So this is probably a little more typical, atypical.
Okay.
The next group that we'll be talking about is more typical.
Okay. Great.
But on this one, it is a separate vote.
Great. Any questions?
Do we have this list?
Yes, you do. It's in your board packet, should be in there.
I don't think it is.
It is not in there, oh. Hold on. Okay, I've, I've got it for you, I think.
Reply all to Melissa's email.
Yeah.
So the two votes are based on a list, that's the same list, right?
It's the same list, but it's two different votes because we have teachers that go from year two to year three. And then we have teachers that go from year one to year two, which means they stay on probationary. I'm sending it to you right now.
Okay, thank you. I don't mean to be, it's just another question. I just have another question. Do we have it is a good one? Yeah, just curious. Our board packet is extra full tonight. There's a lot of documents in there.
And I actually have to send this individually too because it's a personnel item, so it'll take a minute.
Okay. While you're doing that, can I table?
You want to go to the second lead?
Oh, hi. Can I have a motion to approve policy ICA, the school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Those, you'll have to give me those first and second.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to give you time and then I like, so it's Jesse and then Sean.
Okay, thank you.
So would you, so Annika provided notes.
Yep.
Thank you.
So this revision puts into policy our more recent practice of notating prominent religious and cultural holidays. So that language is in there now. So there's state and federal holidays, and then we notate religious and cultural holidays. So they're just, people are aware.
Thank you. And I know this was added a few years ago, just to ensure that when things were being scheduled for, on days that may have been prominent religion and cultural holidays, that they were reflected on the school calendar because we really try hard to not schedule important, other important things either happening during the school day or after school during those days. So I appreciate that the policy was updated. Does anyone have any questions about the update?
We're approving the policy, not the calendar.
Correct. Yes. You ready for, if I take a vote? All in favor? Okay. It was unanimous.
Unanimous.
How about we take a five-minute break?
And you'll have a chance to, if you want to, look at that list as well.
Okay.
I'll just send it to you.
Okay, so we will take a five-minute break. Thank you.
The warrants in the postings that go into the community, the board has to sign these in the exact same spot on every document, so there's multiple copies of the same documents here. And the first one that I'm going to send down is the notice to call the district budgeting. So make sure you sign in the same place on every single one of these that you send down below, okay?
Oh, so I can just start signing here?
Please, and then you ahead. Yep, just sign them all.
Make your favorite.
Just sign the top one right there, and then the next one will do the same thing.
It's so hard for me not to do nurse.
Perfect. These will, um, and so this is what will get posted in the community seven days before the district budgeting.
It works. It works.
The struggle is real. I'm gonna put the, um, tape clip on the last one.
They just don't even have.
That'd be great.
Like this? We don't, like you were trying to.
We'll see how it goes, because the last one's gonna be the first one.
We don't have that problem. Can you just stack them all?
So, did the document get sent out?
Hmm.
I didn't get it.
This is good. I like the superintendent's report.
I don't think so.
He reminds me of everything that I missed.
So the next document that'll be coming down are the warrants calling.
I'll bring another stack in a second.
The budget validation referendum. These get posted ten days before the budget validation.
Thank you. Tape it up. Thank you.
And again, same place on each document.
New document.
New document. New document that looks almost exactly the same.
Well, there'll be, some of these will be the same, so you sign it.
It's not very long.
Right now, you sign it for one community, and the next one will be for the other community.
So we're going to DocuSign next year?
I wish we could. This is like an old, this is old statute, this is old school stuff.
So we need a new statute?
No, we know someone. We know someone. Christine and I are warmed up.
Yeah, where's Christine at? She was just asking if we were still going. I think she, uh, can come by. She's coming back from her vacation.
I was there.
I know. Oh, she was talking all about you. You were, you were.
Oh, Kim, you didn't.
Hi, on her list of things to discuss, she said that you stuck it out.
I did, it was awesome.
And that you were great.
You got messed up, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, yeah.
But she signed me this time from Ukraine.
She said that. Yeah, she told us everything.
I like your pen, Sean.
I suppose my signature should try to look the same.
Oh, my signature is like, it looks. I don't think any of our signatures.
Did you steal one of my pens? Is that what you're saying?
You pick, who's this, who's?
Somebody stole my pen tonight, I don't know where it is.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
That's funny.
Somebody stole your pens tonight?
I swear.
There's an extra pen over there.
I swear it doesn't look the same at all.
Track it down.
It's just different.
My signature is very fast.
Oh, I caught it to you.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Got it.
This document is.
Well.
There?
Presumably.
I, I'll steal your pen.
Yeah, I will, um, I'll, I'll make a copy, that's all I'll do.
I'm not a pen student.
Thank you.
What's my name? These are the best, but we're.
Gentlemen.
Mm-hmm. Much sampled my.
Mm-hmm.
There are peanut butter ones in there, not that good.
Mm-hmm.
They're not.
And then the ones at Costco.
Foods. Those are square ones, right? They're like little and square. There's not enough peanut butter in them. It's too much. Wait a minute, she's not working tomorrow.
Which I like.
I agree. I know. You know, right? So mechanical at this point. That's why I was like, okay, we didn't know what is my name, for the muscles. What are you doing for a break? Softball, softball, softball. Every day, every day, every day.
Really?
Um, yeah, but it's good, it's good for me. And then, um, I'm going to see a.
I think there's two.
Trinity softball game.
The H just done twice on that one.
Where?
Sarah Atrons.
Middle initial.
Have you started looking at schools?
Yeah. If you decide.
We gotta get it better in order.
Did you get it?
I did.
Alright, good.
Alright.
Sign that one.
Everyone should have the spreadsheet now.
Got it?
Her email.
Got it?
Let's see. Blue when I see it.
It's different.
Did you get? Okay, hopefully they did.
Yeah, I went through like a big, big pepper phase, especially two years ago.
Oh, it's Kristina.
She's got to sign now. Gosh, doesn't she have to sign now? Oh, she does have to sign.
You missed us?
Although she didn't. Oh, she didn't vote. Vote, so technically, but it's better if we get more.
Dedication, Christina.
She came, she came in all red-faced and hit just one.
You can still sign all the documents.
Challenge, you do that? Well, Christina, it's really nice of you.
Am I cold?
That feels great.
It's so good to see you.
That's so funny. You going up there on twice?
Okay, that's good. Okay, so second year, people were finishing.
England, if it says, it says continuing. Those people are all going to continue contracts.
Okay, and so those are the ones we're having like the celebration?
Yeah.
Yes, we're having the second year celebration.
And yeah, it is. Oh.
Depends on the year too. Um, we have, we'll have people leave in certain areas, and we'll have nobody, we only have two next year. And we have two people. There are four, that's it.
So, yeah, everyone should have it in their, their email. Should we do the superintendent's report and come back to it?
It's up to you. Yep, we can do that.
Okay, so we are going to go back to the motion, and we can combine them if we want, right?
Uh, there's two different motions, because they're two different.
Okay. So we need to have two different.
Yeah, probation.
Alright, let's, let's try this again. Can I get a motion to approve the continu- the continuing teacher contracts for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Jesse.
Second.
Sean, thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Voting, or is she?
No, yeah.
Is she here? No, okay.
I think she'll.
She abstained.
Alright, and can I have a motion to approve the probationary teacher contracts for twenty-five, twenty-six as presented?
So moved.
Sean, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Megan. Um, other questions on this list? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Great. Alright, unanimous. Now we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Alright, this will be brief. Uh, principal for, principal for an hour, second grader in Ms. Zimmerman's, uh, room one, the principal for an hour. Has to go to classrooms, meet staff, and even see the kitchen downstairs. Fourth graders learn the interesting facts, um, from Maine State auditor Matt Dunlap. He shared examples of how the government has helped people with things like standardize send dials. Well, that's a new one. Um, longitude for ships to sail east and west, and child labor laws. He also donated a new Maine state flag to GMS. Now, is that the flag that was not voted by, by the voters? I don't know. I actually saw that. Uh, that one's popular, for some reason, I see it everywhere. Greeley Middle School four-five, um, celebrated Jackie Robinson Day with visits from Greeley High School, uh, baseball and softball teams, and Portland Sea Dogs mascot Slugger. Slugger loves Greeley Middle School. Special guests, um, chef and educator Chris Toy came to GMS seventh grade, and, uh, obviously helped the students make some food. The Lottery, eighth grade ELA participated in a Socratic seminar discussing the short story of The Lottery by Shirley Jackson. Power of Belonging assemblies, um, there's actually three assemblies this week, um, GMS six-eight, GMS four-five, and M I W. I was able to slide into all three of them for a few minutes, um, and you'll see, um, today at six-eight, the pictures on the bottom, I know they're so far away. Um, but you'll, we have many staff members dressing up in these, um, inflatable, um, cartoon characters and, um, having a, a race across the gym, uh, is one of their, their fun things. Students of the Month at the high school, um, this theme this month was open-minded, so congratulations to these four students for, um, for their, um, actually a Student of the Month for March, appreciating their own culture and personal histories, well as values and traditions of others, and seeking to evaluate a range of points of view, and are willing to grow from experience. Spanish immersion field trip, uh, Margaret Correll's Spanish class explored all things Hispanic in Portland last Tuesday and did a field trip. And for Rangers Rock, uh, we had eight students that attended the premier teen mental health conference in New England yesterday, and I think last year, if I remember correctly, there was a And I think last year, if I remember correctly, there was a snowstorm at the beginning of April when they were supposed to go, and they didn't end up going, so it was nice for them to be able to, to get down there this year. They actually won chapter of the year for call cares of all the chapters in New England. They actually won the chapter of the year for the most active chapter. Rangers Rock, Wes Piper is representing Greeley at the main shrine lobster bowl this summer. Part of his involvement is fundraising for the shrine hospital. Congratulations to Wes. And spring sports are underway. Whether it's snowing or not, it's underway. And it's just a reminder, we have a one campus project webpage. We keep it updated and also looking for the planning that's going ahead. So that's on our website. So hopefully I kept it short enough.
That was great. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. All right, moving on to committee reports.
Okay, um, so let me try to touch this without it yelling at me. Okay. Um, starting off, we have some spring sports. Awesome. Clearly, um, we have a lot going on. Baseball and softball just had their opening day and, um, I think lacrosse did too as well today. And from what I've heard so far, don't quote me, everyone's won. I don't know. Maybe not, maybe not boys lacrosse. I know, I know girls did, but, um, and then saying goodbye to seniors, that happened. We're, now we know that they're leaving in like, on like, some of the IB students are leaving on like May third because they have to study for their exams, which are coming up really, really fast. And so we're kind of just like hanging on to the last few days of them being at school with us, especially with break taking a lot of those days away. And so I'm going to brag for her while she's not here to stop me, but Sophia got into UCLA and she has posted her commitment and she's really excited. Number one public school in the United States, super big deal, nine percent acceptance rate, smart kid. She's also going to watch this and be like, Katie, are you kidding me?
I'm so excited.
Yeah, so if you see her, congratulate her. Um, and yeah, end of quarter three, check. Greeley's got talent. That was awesome, so I hear. And then I miss the Jackie Robinson Day for Mr. Taylor's class, but, um, but I also heard that that was awesome. And yeah, I think everyone's just locked in for quarter four and, oh my gosh, I got my junior privileges today. Pretty cool, growing up. Yep.
So what, what are, um, can you tell people what junior privileges are?
Oh, yeah. So it basically means that as long as all of my grades stay above an eighty-five, um, I can leave school for study halls. So a little bit of freedom, yeah.
You'll take it, right?
Yes.
And yes, Greeley does have a lot of talent. I was able to go then. I was so like sold out, um, and it was incredible what we, the talent we have here, so very cool. All right, moving on, uh, community engagement.
Bringing it back.
Yay.
We wanted to see.
I was like, hold on a second.
We wanted to see if Megan wanted to comment from last year. Be the engagement committee.
I can, I mean, I can go back in time.
Not April first anymore, but.
I mean, but, I mean, you've been doing a lot of work.
There's been some community engagement.
Yeah.
Can I just make one quick plug here?
Yes.
The groundbreaking ceremony for our new school will be on June twelfth, rain or shine, at six P M. And it is going to be a party. A party. There will be the jazz band, there will be cake, and balloons, and speeches, and shovels, and children, and it's going to be amazing. So you'll hear more about it, probably a lot more about it, probably from this lady. But June twelfth, put it on your calendar.
I've heard it's going to be very exciting.
It is going to be very exciting.
I heard the children will be doing the earthwork.
They're, that, that's what give. They're not confirmed nor can I.
Yes.
Little tiny shovel.
Can we write that into curriculum?
Kim, finance, have you been busy?
I think we've covered everything. The one thing I will say is that I want to apologize to anyone who tried to attend the meeting on Monday. We moved it to a remote meeting partly to help me out because it was the day before tax day and it was hard for me to get away from the office. But unfortunately, Tuttle Road lost power, um, literally moments before the meeting started. And I think that that resulted in some people either not getting the message or trying to log in and not getting in. So I just want to apologize if that happened because it is never, ever our intent to block someone from attending a meeting. And I'll be in touch about when our next meeting is.
Yeah, that was a very unusual day, for sure. Thank you, Kim. Policy, Jesse.
All right, on this absence, uh, we got two first read policies here, people to take a look at. The first one, uh, policy BEA, so that's school board use of electronic mail. So this one came up for review as a result of the Supreme Court Linkey decision and the changing social media landscape in the last fifteen years since this policy was adopted. This policy was all about friending. So the Linkey decision points to the importance of individual board members making clear on their social media pages and posts that they're speaking in their individual capacity and not on behalf of the board unless explicitly authorized to do so. And offer some example language that could be used by board members additionally points to the importance of providing links where information can be found on the district website or any other official platforms when sharing board-related information on social media. So encourage everybody to take, take a look at that. Let us know if there's anything gives you heartburn.
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions? So was most of the changes suggested in here, is this from, are these things that, that came from Drummond Woodson or like a example policy? Or were some of these generated from the policy?
A little of both. So Drummond Woodson had some suggestions and then we, we softened some of the language and then there were things we wanted to take out and they said we should probably keep some of them in. So there's been a bit of, a bit of back and forth between the two. Tim?
Yeah, it, it makes it both. I mean, I think they had like specific recommended language of what we should say on social media too. And we were like, eh. Like, we kind of gave a little bit more flexibility to some of that stuff, but like, yeah, most of the stuff that they made input on was, um, was agreeable. Like, it makes a lot of sense. But there, there, we, I think we softened it to Jesse's point. To, to be a little bit more flexible, but good for the time.
Well, I. There's language such as like, board member shall, and now it's such as, so.
Yeah.
We give an example, but we're not saying you have to.
Yeah.
Use that, but.
Well, I appreciate having this because I know this has come up a lot, at least the past three years of me being on the board, just about like what we should and shouldn't be doing. So it's nice to have some guidance.
Right.
School board, the, the policy is entitled school board.
We did talk about that and it was just school board related, because I don't think we could do anything like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, oh, yeah, Sean, it is.
You can try and speak on our behalf.
This, this has come up.
I'm just saying.
This has come up and I think we should talk about addressing this, um, maybe going into next board year.
Yep.
Is when we have committees where there are community volunteers, um, just guidance. I think that would be helpful. So I think that's something just to take note of, just so people know.
Yeah. Good point. Any other questions on? All right, so our, our second first read is policy J L C D, administering medications to students. So this has been in process with the school nurses since the end of last school year. GHS nurse Erica Saparis met with the policy committee to review it in March. And it's been reviewed by Drummond Woodson. The changes reflect language updates, statute updates, and some related forms that are now available on Power School. There was a lot of talk of how to link those things. So, yeah, if there's anything in there that they have questions about or wants to weigh in on?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Does it include supplements, like a lot of the, um?
It does.
Yes, it does.
Supplements and or homeopathic remedies. Yep, yeah, it's pretty exhaustive. We spent a lot of time talking about, yeah. All these things. And then one other note besides those. So other updates, we formalized the referral from the policy committee to the building committee to undertake the process or processes and make recommendations for naming the new school and associated naming. So building committee is going to take that on, punt it back to policy, who will then punt it to the school board when they've got names for things.
Yeah, so far it's Valenti Elementary School. We'll vote on that next week. First read.
Can I get a second?
You got half the population.
Hearing none, so.
I've cleared it out, so you picked up.
All right. Okay, thank you, Jesse. Um, facilities.
Jeff, do you have a presentation that I shared with you?
Who?
A couple hours ago? I shared a little, I shared a, a.
Short presentation.
To walk through it. Okay, so we, um, met yesterday as a, I should be there, shared Valenti. There I am, down there. So we met as a building committee yesterday, as we talked about, to go over the latest numbers that we've gotten from the estimator, which finally came in. Now, they've been with the design team for a little bit, um, and I can kind of see why they delayed giving them to us right now because I think they needed to work through some of those numbers. So, um, opening up, I think before we kind of discuss those numbers, I think mostly for the public, but for us too, it's important to remember that we, the word contingency and what that means here. So we have built in contingencies within this budget. So we had a five percent project contingency and also a five percent, um, bid contingency as well. And we've used these, or we're using these, it's just like just in case cushion. It's one of our many forms of a security blanket that's been built into the estimate, right? And so it is possible that actual costs in the budget are tracking under our budget, but when you include the contingency, they go, it looks like we are over budget. And that is what is currently kind of happening, so we'll get to it in a minute. But we have fully kind of expected to use contingency. We hope not to use all of it, but like, it's, it would be surprising to not use at least some of it. And the other big thing, and Sean can very well talk to this as well, is that there are layers of contingency within the budget. So for example, we have that five percent project and we have the five percent bid, but within certain lined items or from certain like subcontractors, we have contingencies that are built into those line items as well. So that when, um, if, if you actually looked at the total percentage of contingencies, there's probably a lot more built in than just those two five percent ones that are in there, right? And even the estimator probably put a contingency when they gave us the estimate, so that the estimator is somewhat safe. So there's, there's multiple layers of contingency. So in our original proposal, as you see here, um, we're, we're budgeted or allotted project allowance is fifty-three million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, right? In March, after the first project estimator, we were a little bit above this, but our, you could see our contingency stayed the same, but our estimator was saying that like some of the materials picked or the stuff that we haven't moved to add alternates, everything we were kind of asking for, put us over the allotted amount. Then April sixteenth happened and what we were given, um, most recently was a much higher number at fifty-five million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And that kind of set off alarm bells for, I think, anyone who had seen that of, whoa, we're over four percent, including Jeff felt that and Scott felt that. And so we, we went deeper into the numbers. Now, we expected it to be higher because the estimator was going to build in somewhere between a two point five and a eight percent tariff contingency. We've heard various numbers based off of estimators, but it was some, it was someplace around there. And we ended at about a five percent tariff contingency. So if you look at our contingencies here, um, right now, built in, because the whole thing doesn't get the five percent contingency, it's really just like the one project that, that, um, around the, the new school build. Right now, about five million, we have, in, in tariff contingencies, just over like five million, eight hundred, not tariff contingencies, all of our contingencies that include tariff contingencies is probably close to six million dollars in just contingencies, which makes up that, uh, which is a bigger portion of the overall project costs than we had before. So our contingency money has gone up, but that, so has now the overall like project, um, costs, if that makes sense, the total. So, um, even though that we, can you go to the next slide? Even though that our, you know, since our, um, are the, we had to account for the tariff, tariff contingencies and confusing economic times. We wanted to bring that money down a little bit to make us feel safer. Um, I think we have the contingencies, even if we didn't do this, to probably be safe. But we didn't feel good with being over as much as we were. So Scott and Jeff and the design team did a beyond admirable job of reviewing the budget and getting, looking for potential cost savings. They were really creative and flexible. So I'm going to go over some of those right now. So as you know, that, um, we, the building committee really heavily advocated for parking and one of those parking spots is, um, over the, you could describe it better, but it's in front of the GCA. It's like parking over that ugly pond kind of area.
Pond in quotes, right.
Pond in quotes, yeah, everyone knows. And so that actually is disproportionately impacted by the potential for tariffs because it includes like this plastic casing that comes from China, I think. And so for about thirty spots, we, um, we would have to spend five hundred thousand dollars on that. So what we're going to do, because we think that parking and the location of it is extremely valuable, and even though I think that is very expensive parking, the location of it is just, it's location, location, location. So right now, that's in our bid alternate. It is possible that like we look at other parking solutions, like we could look back out here, but like there are other spots because we don't, parking again is a sensitive issue for us. We don't want to lose that. But I think by the time we get to, um, when we see a little bit clearer picture of where our bids come in, we can kind of decide on parking. So right now, that is moving over, the parking over the pond is moving to bid alternate. Then, um, we are going to save two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on, um, not putting in the MIW windows and cafeteria doors. And Scott, you're welcome to talk about that if you want to right now, but I think most of the, the biggest problem, windows in MIW were replaced already this year. And, um, when we brought this up with staff yesterday in the building committee, they felt completely comfortable with where we're at and will replace those. It's kind of part of our typical like, um, facilities plan, so.
And just to mention, one of the things that we didn't initially include that is in part of like the base budget is, I mentioned the roof earlier and how it's being drilled into. Because that is part of, um, the MIW project, um, is to replace that roof, which is going to be.
Yes, the whole roof. That, there's, the things that were cut, which is why I really, when I saw that big number come out or being over budget, I was concerned that we would have to eat into things like that. Some like real big structural issues or academic related issues. But I think the savings that we're going over right now do not hit any of that. So the roof is still there. We're replacing the whole roof. There's hopefully no more leaks. And I think all the rubber that's going to be used in it is made in America, so we feel good about that. All right, so then there's the maintenance building. I think we are scaling back on the windows that we're going to put in. We were going to put in a very, very, Steve Blatt likes to say a very, very, very good window, and now we're just going to put in a very, very good window. One less very.
Were we also reducing the number of windows?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and reducing the number of windows too. Yes. I still think there might be room to play with there because we're going to change the siding of that as well, because the siding that, um, is anticipated, um, is steel. And I think there's some tariff concerns around that, so they're looking at alternative siding options.
So just little thing, aluminum, but just, it's aluminum siding and most of that's made in Canada, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, these are the things we're dealing with. Um, okay, the field lights, I think this is still, um, I think this is not a definite no. There's a lot of things that we have to kind of adjust for, but. to kind of adjust for. But right now, there's, this is an opportunity right now to, since we have field lights over it, they've been adequate. They're not necessarily what we want to be long-term. And so we are going to hold off from replacing just really the, like, the, it's almost like the, the light fixtures or bulbs that, going from like a 30, what is that candle, whatever, to 50. We are sticking, we're sticking to what we currently have, but we are going to do all the infrastructure around it, so that when we want to switch or have the money, or we want to do external funding or something like that, we can easily do it. It's already plugged in to, to be able to do it. So, but we are going to save a good amount of that.
And I, yeah, this is one of the things I mentioned in the earthworks. It didn't need to be part of that.
Correct.
And we didn't want to have concerns at that phase about going over, so we're holding it.
Correct. And then, this is, we've been able to kind of negotiate around the turf and reduce some of those funds. I didn't ask too specifically about what they did to kind of reduce that, but I think they've, we aren't spending as much in that. So the total cost right now that we, that we've been able to reduce, pretty, you know, it took a day for them to do that, but it's pretty quick, is $800,000. And then, if you go to the next slide, the rest of that, we think that we are going to try to close the gap with some potentially of our bid contingency. So that's, that closes, if we add that, plus the $800,000 in reductions, we're now back to on track and below budget. It's important to note that the actual like, project costs are below what we've anticipated at it. It's really just been the added tariff contingencies that have put us over that. So I think with all the insurance that we have in the contingencies and the layers of contingencies, I actually think we're doing pretty well. I feel much more comfortable than maybe this kind of shows, because that we had to kind of eat into some of that. But I'm hopeful that the, I'm hopeful that the tariff situation resolves itself between now and by the time this has to get built, so that we can, we can put this money back into where we need to. But right now, I feel confident and comfortable where we're at, much more comfortable than I did earlier this week. And so, so did the Building Committee. So this is just where we're at, and these numbers change every day. We just got a new set of numbers kind of today, just like a couple hours ago, that we'll like, be digging through in the Budget Committee Subcommittee, the facilities of the, of the Building Committee will be diving into to see what else we can kind of save or potential, potential areas of, of warning and concern. Sean, who's in the audience now, has been incredible of finding things and explaining the contingencies upon a contingencies, and he's got great spreadsheets, so we've really valued our community members. And that's also to note that our committee members who are in the community, who are architects and been, you know, project managers on school designs, have also feel comfortable with where we're at with the budget. They all, I sent an email to them around explaining all of this, and they all feel good, and our reduction rationale makes a lot of sense. So that's where we're at. So if you see anything that like, whoa, we're way over budget, we're actually doing okay.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for putting that together. I know we met until late last night. So a couple other just context things, and then, of course, if others, especially others on the, the Building Committee have things to add. So we are three weeks out from putting the bid out for this. We had eight qualified bidders.
Seven or eight?
Eight, there were eight bidders, okay.
Which is, is really good.
Very good.
That is a nice number to know that we're going to hopefully have some pretty competitive bids for this. And our work, work is happening like, every day to continue to refine and understand where there might be more opportunities before the bid package is put together to make sure that we're going to get the, the best bid possible for what we need. And yeah, the amount of work, like I said, the drilling into the roof, just to make sure we have the specs right, with the right materials. I mean, the number of pivots that have had to been made just over the past couple weeks to make sure that materials aren't going to drive up these bids. I mean, unfortunately, things have been changing pretty often, but we're also talking, we'll be talking with legal about ways to protect ourselves through the contract, if there's tariffs put in that don't end up needing to be paid. So we're just looking for other opportunities.
Oh, yes.
Because we'd rather not spend taxpayer money on tariffs. Just saying. I mean, I don't want my.
No.
Taxpayer money spent on tariffs. So.
We all voted no on that.
Yeah. Yes. Uh huh. So what did, what did I miss, fellow Building Committee members?
I don't, I think you, I think you summed it up. Yeah.
I just want to echo the fact that I think everybody's contributing a lot of their time, effort, and energy, and it's much appreciated. And I think we're lucky to have the community members we have and their skill set, because it's added a lot to the project.
It has. Yeah. It's been really nice. And it's fun to listen, because I know nothing about this, and I'm just like.
No, it's been a great group.
So interesting. Yeah.
Tim, do you, are you okay if we put this up on the website?
Yes. I mean, we could clean it.
Then we'll have Melissa do that.
Can we change the red? Sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, the red was really bothering me too. And I had to, I'm pretty good at Google Sites, and like, I was in the series forever, and I was, where is the color just for this? But yes, let's change the red to something that's crimson, maybe? I don't know. Yes.
Oh, yeah, that great and maroon.
Yeah, maroon.
Yeah. We love the maroon.
We can do that.
Other questions? Kim?
So it's my understanding that this, essentially the same school is being built in Skowhegan right now.
Mm-hmm.
And how is that going? Is, is that going according to plan, according to budgets? I mean, obviously, things were in place before tariffs, but.
Yeah. My understanding is they're going to get that in. I mean, they had it all bid it out and everything, and they, so they're, they're, they're stuck to what is part of those contracts. My understanding is that they are not been impacted significantly by that.
But that school is coming along.
Yep.
According to.
Yep.
Budgets and everything.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's usually on budget. He bragged about that yesterday, but also we all had to knock on wood, so. Yeah.
Pretty sure they're getting all their ad alternates for that project, so.
Yes.
They had that much room in their budget.
Yes.
And it sounded like they were doing more beyond what they had, the alternates.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's a good sign that we have that many competitive bidders, because I think our, our understanding of the landscape is, people are dropping out because they don't want to build right now. So hopefully, hopefully people are hungry, as you say.
If they're willing to bond it, that, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. So then the bids come back in June.
Yes.
Yep, so we have.
Five weeks.
One more tentatively scheduled meeting between now and when the bid goes out, and that's two weeks from yesterday. So is that the 30th? What did I say? I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it's.
Yeah, it's the 30th.
Yeah, the 30th. So if, we'll be reviewing the budget again between now and then. And I, you know, it's, we'd have to do something pretty quickly if we're going to make any kind of changes, but we will do our due diligence on it now that we have the detailed budget, and we'll let you know if anything changes. But right now, it looks good.
Thank you so much. And yes, thank you for, there's been a lot of work that's gone into working to make this success. So thank you. Curriculum.
Oh.
Oh, look.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I tack on to that before I do curriculum?
Yeah.
I don't know if this goes in announcements are here, but I did message some of you, and I don't know who else you've told yet. But there was a bill put in to extend the bond, the loan from 25-year to 30-year, with the help of the honorable gentleman sitting up there. And it passed this afternoon, 92, out of the Education Committee.
Good.
So.
That's great news.
It's looking good to head to the floor. And yeah, there was a little bit. So if you hear anyone, if, if Greg Eem, am I saying that right? Greg Eem testified to it.
Greg Eem.
Mr. Porter, thank you very much.
Yep.
You might, if you review the committee meeting, you might see a little blip that occurred, something about tabling it. But at any rate, a few flip flops and it's, it's all set.
Good.
It's passed. So just.
Thank you.
Scroll farther along in the whole video.
It's out of committee, yeah. And it, there's no fiscal note attached, so that's always.
Yes, that was, yeah, yeah.
Good sign.
We made it very clear that, that's being borne by the local.
That's great, because that was pivotal in our plan of financing on the project.
I, yep. You didn't know I could do backflips, but apparently I can. So I want to add that, so to give you all a relief to, to know that that is on its way.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
We very much appreciate that.
I know, right?
Yeah. So, on to curriculum.
All right, now put your other hat.
Exactly. So on to curriculum. So I talked about the March, the last meeting, March 31st, at the last meeting, so I won't go back over that. I would want to follow up, though, that the, one of the major topics in that was presentation about the potential of considering world languages at the lower levels, and it's a long-range consideration, but we wanted to get that going. And the young lady graciously did a wonderful presentation on that. And just to follow up on that, we did get, or certainly I did, and I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't even notice who else was copied on that, on the committee, but we did get a email from 10 or 12 language, language teachers who are very much in support of exploring that idea.
Great.
And that was important, because that was one of the things we didn't know for sure in going into it, like, well, is there support for this in the, in the, in the faculty? So at least we know that there is now. So that was great to hear. And I apologize if you didn't get it. I can certainly forward it to the rest of you guys. Do you want to follow up on that, or?
Awesome. I did not get that email, but I also have not been getting many emails that are coming externally from like, anything, so that might be why. But, and then, oh, right, I'm meeting with some high school Spanish teachers and one of the French teachers about just progression and seeing what they might want to do, what they might want to see, hopefully get some like, good answers in case I ever end up in a presentation up here, so then I can like, have something to say about what they think about it, because obviously they see it firsthand. Yeah. Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great. And that's it, except that our next meeting will be May 19th at 3:00 on Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Kim, Equity?
We met last week. Mari talked about the stakeholder survey, things that leaped out to her that perhaps should be on our, meaning the Equity Committee's radar. So that was very helpful, and I apologize because my computer died and I lost my notes, so I can't tell you everything. And my brain is shot now. But it was very helpful to, to think about the survey from the standpoint of what the committee is looking for and where the equity plan is at. And we also had a good conversation about maybe changing some of the questions next year, being a little bit more pointed. One of the, the budget items that did not advance was for a survey, I can't remember if it was a company or consultants, but to work with Mari on the stakeholder survey. We did not advance that through the budget, but it is something that she is looking at now that she has a better idea of what information and data she wants to be gathering and, and how we can, how we can make sure that, I'm just going to say what Julie said, every child is able to access their education, exactly what they need. So that was a good conversation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You did well even without your notes. Any other ad hoc committee reports?
I went to the Park and Rec.
Parks?
I guess. Rec and Park, the show. I went to the show. The actual committee name. Yeah, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, I got it right. And we talked about the Twin Brooks Master Plan, and the fields on the Greeley Road side of that are MIW, like, or MIW, are district kind of owned and responsible. So I am leading a subcommittee on that team to kind of go over those recommended changes and approvals. And so I will bring that to the board at some point, but there's a lot in the master plan around parking and improving really like, the, our, our access to baseball and softball fields, because we have limited access to that right now.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So that's been, that's like, the big part of the master plan on that side. So I'll be working on a, a good deal on the master plan that I'll propose to you pretty soon.
Great. Can I ask about that?
No.
The, the road on that side to the fields?
Yeah.
Is that town-owned, school-owned, paid for?
The road going down to it? Like, the Greeley and then the little like, dirt road that goes down to that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I think.
It's bad. Let me just, let me cut to the quick. I mean, I don't know how anyone gets to games, or it has massive.
Yeah.
Holes, potholes, all the time, keeps happening. And it's like, ooh, I mean, if we've got all these visitors coming to our games there.
Well, they usually don't make it there. They end up on the other side of Twin Brooks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but, and then they end up driving back around. But by the time they do get to that parking lot, it is awful. And the parking specifically, I'm really glad that someone's focusing on it, because it's kind of just like, if you get there, you get there. If you don't get there, you're on the road. That's kind of it. Especially with like, and obviously, we have kind of baseballs and softballs flying all over the place, cars get hit. It's not great. But, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Pretty sure we're on the hook to pay for that. There was a comp plan meeting where they talked about it, and it's like, we've got the 99-year lease, and we're on the hook for, it's like, us or the Little League might want to pay for it.
Yeah.
And I was like, well, school is not going to pay for it. Maybe Little League's got money.
We had the lease on that property, and then we relocated the fields when we did Greeley Middle School. And part of that project that was state-funded was the fields down on Greeley side of Twin Brooks. So my guess is, we're going to have some responsibility on that.
Yeah. I looked, I actually looked at the deed.
I was going to say, did you, did you read all of that?
Yeah, I did read all of it. So I'm pretty sure we're on the hook to pay for any of any improvements.
How does a co-op play into this?
Maybe they build fields.
Yeah, the town, the town couldn't sell it to us because of the covenants on the deed, but we, they were able to lease it to us. So we were able to move the fields there. Little institutional knowledge.
That's good.
Yeah. A couple other ad hocks from me. I was not able to attend the athletic advisory last week, but there's a draft guidelines for the use of Hutchins Field that's going around. So that will probably at some point come, at least to the administrative office. I don't know if this would come all the way to the board, but it's being worked on.
Yeah.
So that, and then also talking about, yes, what are, what are the things that some fundraising could focus on related to the, the fields? The turf field is, is definitely being discussed. So I need to get an update of what was, what happened last week. I just want to do a little plug. I know Kyle's cares was mentioned earlier. I know the 5K is coming up. There's, I love that you can just like, scan the sign out there and, and do a sign up. So on your, on your way out in the dark, if you want to sign up for that race, you can just scan the QR code on the, on the banner out front of the school. I unfortunately won't be in town that day, so I can't join, join the 5K, but it was a great turnout last year, and a nice fundraiser for that organization. Any other ad hoc committee?
I attended my wellness finally, and we had a nice discussion, broke out into groups about what the committee's been working on and potential website updates, what would be helpful for parents, what would be helpful for teachers that's wellness-related. So, yeah. Maybe some website updates coming in the future.
All right. Anything else on committees? So, moving to communications, I did just want to mention, we have the next two weeks off from, from board meetings. I mean, you probably, you might have a committee meeting, but regular board meetings. But May 8th, tell all your friends, tell first-time voters on May 8th that they can come and go to the district budget meeting and raise their little card up. It'll be at the GCA.
Not you yet, Katie, right?
Mm-mm, mm-mm. Not yet.
There'll be some seniors, well, this will probably be their first opportunity to vote. So, and that meeting is at 7:00 PM. It is a little later, just to make sure everyone can attend. So remind everyone you know that that's happening. And then we do have the joint meeting scheduled for May 15th with the towns. And as we've been mentioning, real focus on that conversation is some of these longer-term planning conversations and also shared services. And, yeah, and then the next week, we have another school board meeting, so. If you didn't get enough tonight, you have a few weeks off and then, oh, yeah.
It's, speaking of school board meetings, now my term is up, so it depends on whether I get elected. But I, my understanding is a meeting was moved to April fifteenth, which is tax day. So I was wondering if there was any way.
For next year.
For next year.
Oh, well. So we were trying to get away from the Thursday. Do we want to just make it a different day of the week, like for that week?
For that week.
Yeah. A Monday or a Tuesday?
It's the week before April break, but it's also.
And there are holidays.
Well, and it's the budget, so keep in mind what happened this week from a budget perspective. Like, is that always the meeting where the board approves the budget?
It is. It's, we looked at moving it to like after break, which would be more comfortable. We can't get the absentee ballot, I mean, the district budget meeting in, in time and then get the absentee balloting. We used to do that back in the day when, before we had to worry about having all those timetables line up. But now that we have absentee balloting, we can't, we have to be respectful of that piece. We can't get away from it.
Well, the fifteenth is my husband's birthday and the sixteenth is our anniversary, so if we could bump it, that would be appreciated.
It sounds like the fifteenth's out.
So. Well, I, not necessarily, but just if, if I could just remind, yeah.
Is the, is the day before tax day any better, Kim?
Not necessarily, but, but what happens is, is when we submit the last return, we go out. And I'm, then I'm very tired, but whatever it needs to be, it needs to be.
We'll have Melissa work on that.
Okay.
If there's another option, that would be lovely.
I know, I wish we could do it after.
I might not be back next year.
April break. Yeah, it's nice, I'm running in a post. Great, okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I moved to adjourn.
Thank you, Christina. Can I get a second? Megan, all in favor? Yay, thank you. I know this was like.
Good job, Sean.
Yes.
Way to stick it out.
Yeah, a marathon.